Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, Tuesday, October 15th, in the McCullough Hearing Room. All selectmen are present at 6:30 PM. Under our scheduled appointments, we have a tax classification hearing. I'm going to start with that item. It's a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. Welcome to the Board of Assessors. Good to have you with us. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The hearing tonight has been posted and has been advertised in the Metro West Daily News. Southborough Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing with the Board of Assessors on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM to determine the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial, and industrial, and personal property. The hearing will be held in the McCullough Hearing Room, Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. Interested citizens may present oral or written views prior to or during the public hearing, Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Mr. Savelly.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honorable board members. My name is Paul Savelly. I am the principal assessor. Welcome to the classification hearing, FY 2020. Let me introduce my board members, Tom Beaumont and Jeff Klein. Here to my left, Arthur Holmes has the night off. I also have here to my right Tammy Rice banging away on the presentation, up from the DPW helping me as usual. Our agenda is follows, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin with a brief 15-minute presentation that will be followed by selectmen's discussion. We will then open the floor for public comment, and we will conclude, hopefully, with several votes. I do have a disclaimer. I have a bad cold. I can't see. I can't hear. I can't talk very well. I have enough medication in me to take down a rhino. Needless to say, this presentation could be a walk on the wild side. I just have a quick, I want to give you guys a quick update on the assessors department. Since we last met, last met in October 18, our staff has completely turned over. Yes, they have abandoned me. Tammy, who splits time between the assessors and the Board of Health, has moved to the DPW as business administrator. I certainly want to thank her for the four years she spent with us and the amazing work she has produced. We brought up Barbara Speary from the library to succeed Tammy as administrative assistant in both the assessors and Board of Health. She's doing a great job for us in her new role. As you're all aware, our deputy assessor Cindy McLeod has moved on to the Police Department as their business administrator. Obviously, this is a huge loss to our department as the deputy assessor position is, in fact, the centerpiece of our operation. I want to congratulate Cindy on her new position, acknowledge the incredible work that she did for us. She's one of those employees that is absolutely amazing. Everything she touched in the office, she improved, including the Christmas tree. Or is it supposed to be the holiday tree? Whatever. Losing the entire staff in less than eight months in a small department, obviously, is rather concerning, stressful. I've lost 10 pounds in the last couple of months, especially considering the next year is a certification year. This is important. Certification occurs once in every five years. All communities have to go through it. Basically, what that is, is the, it's an audit of the assessors' valuation model and methodology conducted by the Department of Revenue's Bureau of Local Assessment to assure that the assessors develop, developed, assessments are developed in a fair and equitable manner. As you can imagine, the workload has increased significantly. Nobody ever wants to see the Department of Revenue come knocking their door. So obviously, it's going to be an enormous challenge with the new staff. This is my perfect segue to inform you that a significant uptick in the assessors' FY 21 budget can be expected, obviously, to overcome the additional workload and the obvious fallout from losing a highly experienced staff. Now for the good news. We have a new deputy assessor, hailing from the great community of Milford, Massachusetts, a recent graduate of Worcester State University, and bringing experience from the Milford Assessors' Office. Please welcome Corinne Diaz. Smile, kid. You're on camera. Now, I'm going to turn the whole presentation over to her. Let's see how she does. I can't tell you how excited I am to have Corinne as part of our department and the finance team. We had to swiftly outmaneuver several other communities in the area who also had staff positions open to land this talented young lady. A quick shout-out to Vanessa Hale and the Personnel Board for moving the process along at light speed so we could, we could hire Corinne before any other community had a chance. Just keep in mind, Corinne has a rather large learning curve to overcome, so we ask people to be patient as turnaround time for requested information will obviously be a bit slower. The plan is to have Cindy McLeod spend a couple of hours once a week in our office after her day concludes at the Police Department to provide training and assist Corinne in her development. It needs to be acknowledged as the efforts of Cindy and Tammy. Despite moving on to new positions, they still make time to come back and train our new staff members. We are very fortunate that these two have chose to continue their careers within our organization. It is a testament to their professionalism and overall commitment to the organization as a whole. I can't say enough about their incredible dedication they have towards me and our department. They are two very talented and special women. I feel very fortunate to have both of them on my staff. They have made me, and continue to make me, look very, very good, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart, both of them. Don't cry. All right. Let's get rolling here. What is tax classification? Allows communities to have different tax rates for certain classes of property. The classes are residential, open space, which we don't use, commercial, industrial, and personal property. These three groups we will be talking about, we'll refer to them as the CIP. The state statute provides a maximum allowable portion of the tax levy, up to 150 percent, to be borne by the CIP classes. Provides a minimum allowable portion to be borne by the residential class. Tax classification, key concepts, allows the Board of Selectmen to make the decision whether or not to shift burden from one of the class of property to another. Again, this is between, between classes. No additional tax dollars are raised as the levy remains the same. Town of Southborough has never had a split tax rate. It's an issue of fairness between property classes. Fiscal year assessments. FY 20 assessments are based on analysis of calendar year 2018 sales and market conditions. The FY 20 assessments reflect the value of properties as of January 1, 19, and this, of course, is per Department of Revenue guidelines. Is the same for all communities across the Commonwealth. Calendar year 19 sales and market conditions will be reflected in the 21 assessments as there is a one-year time lag in the assessment process. So what's happening in these two assessments? Overall assessments are on the rise. The residential class as a whole increased approximately 4 percent. Commercial class increased just under 7 percent. Industrial class increased 8.60 percent. Again, this is the whole class. It's not everybody's, it's not everybody's property. Some people could go up, some could go down. Excuse me. The town's total valuation increased, increased by 107.90 million to a new high of 2.625 billion in FY 20. We add the tax-exempt value, we're pretty close to 3 billion, which is kind of amazing for, for a small community such as us. Let's talk about the fiscal year 20 new growth. The assessors calculated 53.480 million in new growth value within the community. This represents $895,251 in new growth tax dollars. This results in about a 43.5 percent increase in new growth from FY 19. New growth is highlighted by an 18.8 million dollar renovation project at 325 Turnpike Road by Ken's Foods. That produced nearly $188,000 in new growth. We are extremely excited to have them in town. That was an old building that was very tired. We are very fortunate that they, they took, took over the building and excited that they are investing such a significant amount of money. I think they're going to be a great neighbor for us. Their expansion helped us exceed our 10-year new growth average of $616,072. Looking at an eight-year history of the average single-family assessed value there, the average single-family home assessed value increased $20,600 to $634,400. That's approximately a 3.4 percent increase, and this is the 10th consecutive year it has risen. Okay, let's talk about the single-rate impact. If we continue with a single tax rate, this is for residential, the FY 2020 tax rate would decrease from 1674 to 1668. The average single-family tax bill would rise from 10,275 in 19 to 10,569 in '20. A $294 or 2.86 percent increase, and this excludes the Community Preservation Act surcharge, which on the average single-family home is about $89. This slide here is just the eight-year, an eight-year history of the average single-family tax bill. I do want to say, this is a very moderate increase, considering annual payments on $14.7 million of new debt is included in the tax bills for our new public safety building. It's about $829,000 in new debt that was loaded onto the levy. Single-rate impact, commercial-industrial mixed use. The average assessed commercial-industrial mixed-use improved property rose from 2,799,400 to 3,66400, a 9.5 percent increase. The average commercial-industrial mixed-use bill would rise from 46,862 to 51,086, approximately a 9 percent increase. Just as a note, we arrive at the average commercial-industrial mixed-use assessment by removing all vacant land and office condos. This basically leaves us with land improved with a building. Usually do this for comparative reasons. Let's take a look at the relationship of class values. The commercial and industrial personal property classes combined represents 19.49 percent of the town's total value. This is up slightly from the previous year of 19.30, and history shows that the CIP typically runs between 17 and 20 percent. It goes back a long way. It's not a whole heck of a lot has changed in that, in that way. The Board of Assessors unanimously recommends to continue with a single tax rate for fiscal year 2020. It really is pretty much the same reasons. Let's review them. With the relatively small percentage of value that comes from CIP, 19.49, a split rate would only produce a small savings to the residential class and would increase the CIP classes, making Southborough a less desirable place to conduct business. The Board believes a single rate helps a small town like Southborough attract new businesses into the community while retaining those already here. Expanding businesses within the community provides new tax dollars with little impact on costly services. Additional reasons why, although CIP properties only account for 5.6 percent of Southborough's taxable parcels, they do generate 19.49 percent of the town's total tax revenue. This figure includes personable, personable, persa-no, property taxes, which many businesses pay in addition to their real estate taxes. Boy, I had a tough time with that one. Want to consider the CIP makeup. The CIP is comprised of mostly small businesses, not big box stores that you see in the neighboring communities or large corporations. For the most part, it is small business-driven. The Board of Assessors also recognizes the roles business play in contributing additional funds to support many of the town's athletic, recreational, and community events. This is, this is a very understated box here, the last one. Businesses do an outstanding job contributing to our town well beyond their tax rate obligations. I think it's important to point that out. It's these efforts that gives Southborough what I would call a great community feel and certainly should be cherished. Additional facts, 241 of the 351 Massachusetts communities have a single rate in fiscal year 19. That's about 69 percent, so it's overwhelmingly a single rate across the state. April 15, town meeting voted overwhelmingly to defeat a non-binding article to have a split tax rate. Sorry, Sam. April 15, town meeting voted to fund a part-time economic development coordinator to help expand future business development within the community. Thus, a split rate would be prohibitive to the EDC's goals. Thinking they do a great job for us. Much appreciate their efforts. This is just a scenario to kind of get a flavor for a tax rate shift impact, so what we do is look at a tax, a 5 percent tax rate scenario, and then you obviously can project this out if you want greater. We look at a 5 percent tax shift scenario, residential rate would decrease to 1646, so from 1666 to 1646, while the CIP rate would increase to 1749. So you can see there's a much bigger impact there. This produces only a 1.2 percent or $127 savings to the average residential property while increasing the average CIP property by 5 percent or $2,500 essentially. In round numbers, based on our CIP split, for every $1 you save on the residential, it costs $4 to the CIP. Everybody loves to see this. Where do we fall? Again, just please note, these are 19 tax rates. The 20 have not been set. Southborough's usually one of the first ones, but there you go, there's where we stand with the communities around us. Okay, there are two other shift options that are available that we need to discuss as part of this hearing. It is the residential exemption and the small-commercial exemption. Although Southborough is not likely candidate, is not a likely candidate to adopt either of these two exemptions, they should, they should still be discussed and a formal vote must be taken by the Board to complete the classification hearing. Unlike the split-rate option that shifts burden from one class to another, the residential and small-commercial exemptions shift burden only within their property class. So again, only within their property class. As with the split rate, no additional taxes are raised by either of these exemptions. Let's talk about the residential exemption. It's kind of a lot to go through, but kind of boiled it down to one, one very busy slide, so let's get through it. It shifts tax burden within the residential class from lower assessed properties to seasonal, rental, and higher assessed properties. Allowed only on residential property that is a primary residence of the taxpayer. If adopted, the residential exemption may be up to 35 percent of the average assessed value of all residential properties. Accepting this option increases the residential tax rate only. So you'd be in a scenario where the actual tax rate's higher than the commercial-industrial as you shift burden within the, within the class. Typically, this exemption is adopted in areas with a low rate of owner occupancy. So when you're talking about seasonal properties, obviously, you're talking the Cape. Barnstable, Nantucket would be examples of that. Communities with a lot of rental properties, obviously, your cities, Boston, Cambridge, would be prime examples of that. How this works, if you look to the left, we'll look at the $350,000 assessed value. Without the exemption, tax rate 1666, tax bill 5,831. If we add a 10 percent exemption, how this works is you would take the $350,000, subtract out the 59,422, give you a new net taxable value of 290,578, multiply it by the, the new tax rate of 1832, and you would see the lower-end house would have a tax bill or savings of about $508. Now, let's look at an $850,000 house. You see the taxes there at 14,161. You see the net taxable value of 79578, and that, you see the tax bill increases to 322. So basically, they're subsidizing the lower-end properties. The break-even point of any owner-occupied property is 655,800. So lower, you would pay less; more, you would pay higher. As you can see, it's not a lot of communities that adopted this. We have 16 of 351 communities. I think the closest one used to be Marlboro. They got rid of that a while ago, so obviously, not very popular. The second one is the small-commercial exemption, better known as the SCE. Grants a small-commercial exemption to all Class III commercial properties, that's your commercial, that are occupied by businesses with an average annual employment of no more than 10 people and an assessed valuation of less than a million. Adopting this exemption increases the commercial and industrial tax rates. This exemption creates a tax burden shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of the properties occupied by a small business and shifts them to larger commercial and industrial taxpayers. The annual of tax, the, the amount of tax levy paid by these two classes remain the same. The exemption is for the property owner. It doesn't go to the tenant or the small-business owner. It's important to note. Previously, 15 of the 351 communities adopted this. Examples of that would be Braintree and Bellingham. The Board of Assessors unanimously recommends not to adopt the residential and small-commercial exemption as they are not really relevant to this community. Mr. Chairman, further action items, selectmen discussion, public comment, and then we'll move to selectmen vote. We need three votes. We vote on the split tax rate, residential exemption, small-commercial exemption. Upon completion, we'll need a two-minute TV timeout to assign some paperwork, and we'll move on. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Savelly. I'll, again, start with board comments, then we'll open it up to public comment if there is any after that. Mr. Steiber, I'll start with you if you have any questions, comments.
Yep, I have a comment. I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to attend the Board of Assessors meeting recently where they went through this and had some opportunity for back and forth and questions. I've followed this discussion in town for a number of years and been interested in the topic because my academic background is in econometric modeling, which this depends a lot on in terms of how you understand the, the relationship between policy and outcomes. And many people, such as members of our Economic Development Committee and others, have expressed a strong opinion that split tax rate will have an adverse impact on businesses either staying in town or deciding to locate in town. And I've actually seen no data or heard no compelling arguments that this would actually be true, other than people's opinions, which I understand some of the logic for. I think we've also heard arguments on behalf of Carl Guyer, who's in the audience tonight. I expect he may have some comments later here. And it seems to me that there's an important distinction between data, facts, and opinion that we need to pay attention to. Mr. Guyer presents a lot of data. Nobody else has presented data that I've seen, including academics who've come in to make various presentations on this. And I think it's important to actually pay attention to this stuff before we actually make a policy decision on it. I don't think we've had adequate time to do that so far, and this may be an interesting debate, but for now, I don't think we need to resolve this because, as I look at the implementation of split taxes, I see this as a, one of a number of possible approaches to actually control the rise in residential tax rates. I've talked to a lot of people who've expressed great concern, particularly seniors and those on fixed incomes, of the pressure to increase residential tax rates. When we started the recent budget process, the original projection was a 9 percent increase in, in property, residential property taxes. That got a lot of people excited, appropriately so, I think. Fortunately, we were able to, through the good efforts of a lot of people, including town staff and various committees, to wind up with a, a increase in the average tax bill, as Mr. Savelly comments here, under 3 percent, which is a great result. And I don't think we need to, to be concerned about the split tax rate this year, but I think going forward, it's not unlikely that we will see additional financial pressures, and it seems to me that having this and other tools in our toolkit to deal with controlling residential property tax increases is something that, that we need to at least pay attention to. And I would hope that going forward, Mr. Guyer and others will continue to work with the Board of Assessors and town staff to get more clarity around the relationship between split tax rates and business decisions, whether it actually does encourage people to leave town or not locate in town. Part of my business is actually operating offices in many states, and I actually look at the tax rates, but way down the list in terms of business location decisions, I'm more interested in access to transportation, labor markets, and so forth. And unless taxes are just crazy, that's not a key factor in decisions that I make, and I think that's, has some merit in terms of the way Southborough businesses look at things as well. So again, I'm not supportive of split tax rate at this point, but I think it's important to keep it on the table and continue the discussion and the analysis of the point. So, thank you.
Mr. Kalenda, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Savelly. An outstanding presentation, great work by you and the Board once again. You know, the, years ago, and we've had, obviously, we have these discussions every year. There was at one point, I recall, not in the too-distant future, when there was a threat of a, a split tax rate, and there was an outpouring of commentary from local businesses saying that, you know, they, one of their decisions for, you know, staying in Southborough was the fact that there is a single tax rate and they're, they're not, you know, disproportionately burdened with, with paying taxes to the town of Southborough. We had a number of businesses say that it would be a factor in whether or not they would stay in Southborough if they were going to be charged more. So there is data, and it comes from the very people that, and that it would affect the most, and that is the local small businesses. And as you stated, this was, there was that non-binding resolution back in 2015 overwhelmingly defeated, that had called for a split tax, split tax rate. You guys are the experts on this. You, once again, have come to us and suggested a, a single tax rate, unanimously suggested that, and I remain fully supportive of your efforts and a single tax rate.
Thank you. Ms. Broschow.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for all the hard work that your whole Board put in, in this presentation. I think, you know, we discussed this last year, and the Board is always open to discussion, you know, with the public on, on what's best. I think what you've presented, though, here tonight is important. I think, for me, the most important slide is showing the surrounding towns and what we do. And if you could go to that, Tammy, if you wouldn't mind, for two seconds, it's, it's on my Page 9, so I don't know where it is. Oh, look at that. You're good. Thank you. I, I think this is an important slide in that if you look at the towns that do have the split tax rates surrounding us, they're towns that have a lot more commercial business that we have in town. So for, for me, that's important. I appreciate the work you've done, but we also have struggled to fill the CAS building on Route 9, and I understand that Volvo may be leaving us as well and going to Westborough. So we may have two empty buildings that we're struggling to fill, and I don't know if this is the time to actually explore that much further in, in changing what we have that's worked. Obviously, discussion is important, but I also support leaving the tax rate as single, and thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Mr. Healy.
Mr. Savelly and other members, I won't bury the lead. I'm, I'm, I'm not in support of a split tax rate for a lot of the reasons that have been discussed. Back in the spring, I took a pretty deep dive into the various towns and cities in Massachusetts that have a split tax rate, and Ms. Broschow is, is correct that virtually all of them are larger communities that have significant industrial capacity or malls, large commercial activity. I'm, I'm, and obviously, Southborough doesn't fit with that model. Most of the cities and towns in Massachusetts that, that in one way or another are similar to Southborough have single tax rates, and I think for a lot of the same reasons that Southborough's had one historically, and presumably the reason that you folks are supportive of it today. I'm, I'm curious, one of the things that stands out in the chart that was referenced is Berlin. Do you have any idea?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just curious, you know, do they know something we don't?
No, you know what it is? Sometimes you get these small communities, and you hit the nail on the head. They have the mall. We had a situation where the resident, when the residents, residential values were falling, they didn't want the, it would have shifted some burden, I'm sorry, the other way around. When the commercial values were falling, it would have shifted additional value onto the residential. They singled out the rate to make it, make the mall pay what they were paying prior to. As you well know, there's no disrespect to Berlin, but there's not a lot of business over there. So it was, it was really targeted to one taxpayer, and it's right, exactly what you say. It's always, in a, in a small town, a lot of times, it's, it's one big tax entity they're trying to, they, you know, they're looking to target, and...
So if you know, did they change their tax rate when the mall went in?
It wasn't when the mall went in, Marty. It was when the commercial-industrial values declined, and really, what that does is it shifts burden back on the residential, because the residential values had not declined like those.
And I'm not advocating for a mall.
No. No, but that's, that's really why, because when you look at the chart, it's like, Berlin, really? Is there any business in Berlin other than, other than the...
The mall, okay.
You know, that and orchards. And really, that's what they targeted. And the orchards are all, you know, under chapter lands, so it doesn't really affect them. Yeah, there's not a lot of business over there. So, yeah, they chose to do that, and it was split hard. So, yeah, they chose to do that, and it was split hard just to target that.
All right, and just a couple of questions. On the, on the, on the new growth, that, that seems like a robust figure given past years. Is that driven in pretty much by KENS, or?
It's KENS.
What's number two behind those?
It's KENS. We had probably three subdivisions that hit as well, so there are land splits, so that increased, that increased new growth quite a bit. Leeds Way was one of them, Dairy Farm Lane off of Chestnut, what was the third one? We had a couple of condo complexes that hit, so those helped. So we're not, you know, we're not going to see a lot of land splits like that. That's, that certainly bolstered what we had. So, yeah, it was kind of a, kind of a perfect storm, a good perfect storm for us, that we were able to capture such new growth. But again, it's really the new subdivisions that kind of hit.
All right, and I think you said that, but just to make sure that the, the Board of Assessors was unanimous in supporting the single tax rate?
It is.
All right, great. Thanks for your presentation, appreciate it.
Problem, Marty.
Again, thanks for your presentation as well. Really, all the comments that I've been made, would have made, have been stated already. I am in support of the single tax rate as well. Any other board comments, questions? I'll open it up to public comment. Mr. Guyer, please state your name and address for the record for all those who do make comments.
Good evening. Carl Guyer, 146 Middle Road. You know I'm an advocate for a split tax rate, you know, no surprise. Let me describe, for Southborough, the single tax rate is kind of a, and Sibelli used the same term, is a perfect storm for increasing the taxes on residents in Southborough. Between a relatively high tax rate compared to the rest of the state, the high residential value in the, in the town, and the high percentage, although most of you think this is not true, we are in the top third of the communities in Massachusetts when you rank order them by the percentage of their tax base that is commercial and industrial. We are not a town that is, that has a small commercial and industrial tax base. You'd be surprised how many communities we are close to, if you actually look at the numbers, right? So what this has done, this perfect storm, what it's created, is we have a condition right now where our residential tax rate is greater than what's paid on eighty percent of the residence, residential property in Massachusetts. I've stated this before, and I'll just reiterate it because it's a bit complex. Our tax rate is greater than what's the tax rate paid on eighty percent of the property, residential property in Massachusetts. Now, by itself, that doesn't mean a lot, right? But when you flip over to the commercial and industrial side, our commercial and industrial tax rate is lower, lower, than what's paid on seventy-five percent of the commercial and industrial property in Massachusetts. Again, I'll repeat that because it's a little complicated. Our commercial and industrial tax rate is lower than the tax rate paid on seventy-five percent of the commercial and industrial property in the state, right? You'd probably be surprised also to hear that seventy-eight percent of all the commercial and industrial property in Massachusetts is taxed at a split rate. So it's really not a case where Southborough is following the lead, because only twenty-two percent of the commercial industrial property in Massachusetts is taxed using a single rate. Seventy-eight percent of it is taxed at a split rate, right? So this boils down, when you, when you go through all the math and you compare us to other towns very similar to Southborough, right, there's a number of them, and you apply the split that they have applied to their communities, right, communities just like Southborough, right? You would, you see that the average residential taxpayer in Southborough would say between a thousand and $2,000. It's not an insignificant amount. It's probably the biggest decision you make, right? By going, by just continually voting for a single tax rate, you maintain this burden, I would call it a burden, on residents in Southborough, right? You have to, you really have to look, I mean, in the statewide perspective. I mean, you just throw up a few rates, and it's hard to decipher what's really going on. I mean, because what we saw tonight, it doesn't show how much property is in those towns, how it's breakdown. You really have to dive into the, into the details, right? Oh, here's, here's something that should be interesting to you. I told you that residential tax rate is higher than what's paid on eighty percent of the property, so we have a high residential tax rate. You've probably seen me do this before, right? High residential tax rate, low commercial tax rate, right? What if, there's the old expression, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? So assume that next year, we flip that, that we said, okay, commercial and industrial taxpayers, this year, you get to pay a tax rate that's greater than eighty percent of the commercial and tax, industrial tax base in the state. And guess what? Congratulations, residents, you get to pay a tax rate that's lower than seventy-five percent. We just flipped the, flipped the scenario, right? What would those tax rates be? Let me get my glasses out, make sure I, I quote this exactly. Well, I can see it anyways. The residential tax rate would be $10.50. That's pretty good, right? And the commercial tax rate would be $27.50, right? That'll send a shudder through our commercial, you wouldn't want to do that. That would be unfair, it would be, it would not be just, it would be cruel to do that to our commercial and industrial tax base. But we essentially do the same thing to our residential tax base now by implementing a single tax rate. Now, I know this is a lot of numbers, and you probably, probably don't believe me, right? But if you, I'm in the phone book, yeah, give me a call, right? I'll meet you at Redbonne, right? We'll sit down. I have the data, because all the data comes from, the data I have comes, and you can, you can download it yourself, just Google Massachusetts, DOR, databank, and you'll get all the data, right? And then you can crunch the numbers yourself, right? So just keep in mind, demographics is very important, and I think the residents of Southborough would be well advised to, to really push for a split tax rate. One last thing. Mr. Sibelli, can you please put up the slide where you show the, the implementation of a split tax rate and what that would show? I don't know if you saw it last year, they did this last year, and in mysouthborough.com, I tore this apart. This is a very, very unfair comparison. You're comparing a, a single-family residence against a, another piece of property that's almost five times as large. If you, I don't know how assessors can, can do that. If you're going to compare properties, you have to compare them at the same rate, right? And the other thing they do is they pick a, a split, a tax rate, split rate, and it only comes out to $127. I, if it's the same as last year, that's a split rate, that's a ratio of like 1.06. That's a very, very small split. Then they unfairly compare that to a, a commercial piece of property that's worth almost five times as much, and then, and then come up with $2,545. And it makes it look like for a, a savings of $127 for residents, it's going to cost every business in town $2,500, the average business in town. That's a very, very unfair comparison, right? So I'm, I'm amazed to put that back up again. I mean, I'll write another letter and we'll put it in mysouthborough.com, right?
Mr. Sibelli.
Yeah, I just want to say about this slide, first of all, we're looking at the average, you know, single family and the average commercial industrial. The reason why that slide was created was actually the selectman Rooney had asked, what, what's the impact on the average commercial and industrial? Well, we're not, you know, the 127, the 2545, that's not what I want people to focus on. It's the 1.2 percent and what it does in the increase of 5 percent. Secondly, the 5 percent, it's just a 5 percent, you know, scenario. I could have run out, I have every single scenario, all the way up to 150 percent split we could discuss. Every single one of those would be here for three months. I don't think people would want to stick around for that. Again, concentrate on the 1.2 percent and the 5 percent. One final comment that I think is important to make that gets overlooked in this, it's Sam and Carl keep pounding away at, is the residential tax bill, the residential tax bill. Let me remind everybody in this room, everybody watching, the residential tax bill is a reflection of town meeting spending, how much goods and, how much services you want for your money. The level of spending is determined by town meeting. Who goes to town meeting? The residents. The commercial industrial people do not get a vote, and I'm not here saying they should get a vote, I'm just telling you, they do not get a vote because they are not allowed in the hall. If they have a business, if they have a business and live in town, they only get one vote as a resident. It is the town people who decide how much they're paying in taxes. The commercial industrial gets dragged along. They don't utilize the schools or any of those services that we cherish and we spend a lot of money on. It is the residential people who decide that. The commercial industrial people do not get a vote here at, at, these five people who decide if we should split the rate, they do not get a choice in voting these five members in. So what do you have? You have a classic case of taxation without representation, and that's what the tax classification is kind of about, which makes no sense considering our country's history. So, you know, if the residents don't want large tax bills, you know, they, they can cut back on their services. Again, the businesses do not make the decision on that, and I think everybody should be clear on that. And lastly, seventy, nearly seventy percent of the communities are single tax rate communities. And I think that pretty much says it all.
Mr. Chairman?
One, one quick rebuttal, and then I'm going to go to Ms. Cook. That's our assessor making that speech? I mean, does that, does that not ring bells to you guys? I mean, it rings bells to me. I mean, that, what he just talked about, that happens everywhere. I mean, why is that especially bad in Southborough? That, the same process that goes on everywhere. I mean, that kind of speech is, is not acceptable, because that's very principle of how we run our democracy. So I don't think that's fair.
Thank you. Ms. Cook.
Kathy Cook, 11 Greystone Way. Mr. Sibelli, can you put the slide back up that shows the various tax rates for the various communities? So, two things as far as rebutting some of what Mr. Guyer said. You can't get hung up on what your tax rate is. The taxes you pay are the rate times your valuation. So take a look at Wellesley, I think, I don't know what the rate is now, but it's $10, I think. However, if we took our houses, we put them in Wellesley, you're going to pay more taxes. So you can't just look at a tax rate in a vacuum and think it means anything. We've got to make sure that rate stays below $25, but we're nowhere near that, so that's fine. So I don't think anybody should get excited that we're in the top whatever of tax rates. What matters is the taxes you pay, and it takes two things to be multiplied to get to that. The more important thing is, I just want to make a point that this town, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectment, Advisory, work really, really hard to try to keep the increases year over year down to something that is reasonable, and different people can decide what that is, but reasonable. So this year, it's 2.86 percent, which is something that looks like inflation. We try really hard, so the, to me, instead of trying to split the tax rate, which I don't support, obviously, we need to continue to try to find a way to provide the services the town wants at a reasonable cost. So we need to try and find ways to reduce those costs and be more efficient about it. And the last thing I wanted to say is, when Mr. Guyer throws these numbers out here about where we are as far as the, we're in the top 25 percent, 75 percent, he's throwing Boston and Cambridge in there. And so when you throw Boston and Cambridge, these numbers excuse everything. So it's just not fair to look at the state as a whole. Massachusetts is different, and there's different parts, and Western's different than Eastern. There's nothing like Boston and Cambridge. Boston has a huge commercial tax rate compared to the residential tax rate. So to put all that together and act like we're part of this pot with Boston doesn't give us accurate numbers either. So, so obviously, I support the single tax rate, and I think a lot of the discussion tonight, we just get things mixed up as far as what the facts really are that we should be working with.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Chris Robbins, Economic Development Committee, 39 Parkerville Road. Well, Carl, we're, Carl, we're here again. Well, Sam, you keep talking about where's the data, and the greatest data of all of the people sitting right in this room who are making the decision from a practical, common sense standpoint. And every town and city that has voted for the single tax rate, their intuition, their practical knowledge of what's fair is a solid data point that overrules, overrules any economic study that's helpful, but it doesn't give the answer and the, that two-thirds of the towns and cities have agreed on. And by the way, we did share this with a state stop economist. I do know him, his name is Dr. Mike Goodman. Carl's even talked to him on the phone. He disagrees with Carl's assumptions. And along with Carolyn Dykma, who saw his initial report, she said, Chris, you've got to trust what the towns and cities do. They're smart, they're sharp, they understand what's fair and practical. Now, the one thing that I would hope that this committee would start to do, instead of thinking about what we have to do to raise taxes every year, what can we do to save on not raising taxes? For example, I think the greatest thing that happened the other night is when we heard the Safety Committee present over a million dollar savings in, in the cost of that building. And it's impressive of the people who worked on that to ensure that happened. We have a recreation department that gets part of its funding, a principal part of its funding from private funds. I would propose that from now on, we don't talk about how we're going to raise taxes, we're going to talk about how we're going to collaborate as a community to reduce the cost of government, which doesn't stop. And the white elephant is the, in the room today and throughout the state is the unfunded pensions. Ladies and gentlemen, taxes will not go down until we address this crisis in this, at the state level where the unfunded pensions are over $5 billion. In this town, it's $5 million, and to think we can back pay and get caught up and continue to pay people almost, what is it, 80 percent of their salaries till they die is in, we are incapable of being able to survive that without continuing to raise taxes. Now, don't, it's not just my point of view, the Pioneer Institute, you can all look them up, has written a study on the threat of the unfunded pensions, not only here in this state, but across the country where states are, their pensions are folding. So I would propose, along with how we're saving money every year, what are we doing to readdress how we look at the unfunded pensions? And, and I want to thank the committee and Paul for such a thorough and wonderful job in presenting tonight's case for the single tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? At the microphone.
I just, one short comment about the professor, where'd he go? Chris, what was the name of the professor that, what was his name?
Goodwin.
Goodwin, Professor Goodwin. Why I contacted him, right? Just a clarification, right? What got me interested in all of this was when I heard the comments, and this was a number of years ago, that Southborough was going to try and reduce its tax rate by bringing more business into town. I looked at data, I couldn't find that, so, but we had economists come in town and give presentations, right? And so what I was doing, so what I did was I tracked them down, right, and I asked them a specific question. I said, the Economic Development Committee is saying that if we increase the size of the commercial and industrial tax base, it'll bring our tax rate down, right? And the next question is, if you said yes to this, how do you know that, right? And I contacted Professor Goodwin as part of this, right? And he and I, it was email, right? Because he was easy to find on email. We had kind of a back and forth after a while. But after I pressed him for a while, I said, you know, do you, do you support this idea? And how do you support this idea? And his final comment was, I never said that. None of the economists who have come into town and made presentations, some people have seen them, will stand up here and say, if you bring more industry into town, you'll bring down your tax rate, because they'll know, I will ask them the question, how do you know that? And they can't prove it, right? And actually, I've seen the data, it says that the correlation goes up... can't prove it. And actually, I've seen the data. It says that the correlation goes up as opposed to going down. There's no correlation going down, right? So I just wanted you to know that, because Chris mentioned that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to make such a test.
Mr. Chairman, Chris, 30 seconds, and then after that, the two of you can continue.
We have to celebrate the fact that we have 450 establishments, businesses in this town that created 7,000 jobs, $560 million payroll, highest average wages. But the key thing is, this town has a diversity of industry that can carry us through tough times. That's our strength. It's our job to continue to nurture that kind of industry diversity to deal with these tax issues.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'll move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Move seconded. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we now have three votes that are before us, as Ms. Sibelli had requested. First, on whether or not to adopt the split tax rate or a single tax rate. Number two, our vote, our opinion on the residential exemption. And lastly, on small commercial exemption. Is there a motion? Mr. Kalenda.
Can we do it all in one? Do you need three separate?
Take three separate real quick.
Okay.
Three separate is the recommendation.
So I would move that we maintain a single tax rate. And I also want to thank Ms. Sibelli and again, your team. You guys do, you come prepared every single year. You do your homework. Your presentations are solid. It helps us make a learned decision. And I want to thank you, particularly you, Ms. Sibelli, for the great work that you continue to do on behalf of this town and your team.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Move seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Next, residential exemption. Mr. Kalenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we not adopt a residential exemption.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And lastly, the small commercial exemption. Mr. Kalenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we not adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second, and second, and just indicate for purposes of the minutes, that all of these apply for FY 2020. Yes. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. I'm going to move for a two-minute recess so we can handle the paperwork. We'll be back in very shortly. All right, thank you. We are back in session. Next, I'm going to go to Personnel Board. Sorry, we are back in session. I'm going to go to the Personnel Board, second appointment regarding the SAP increase for FY 21. Please.
I just have copies of the FY 20 SAP.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vanessa has a copy.
I'll put the rest of them down to the room.
Don't touch the microphone.
Okay.
I want to touch the microphone that the man who said he was dying.
Let's just get right to it.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to see you. This is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the annual adjustment for SAP employees. My name is Betsy Rosenbloom. I'm the Chair of the Personnel Board. As you know, Southborough has three types of employees: union employees, employees with individual employment contracts, and SAP employees. Unions negotiate pay raises for union employees. Employees with individual employment contracts negotiate raises for themselves. So, how do SAP employees get raises? I think a little bit of history, if you'll indulge me, because it informs the present. Please note, I did not join the Personnel Board until September 2017. My knowledge is limited to my review of the minutes of the Personnel Board and talking to town employees, largely Ms. Hale, our Assistant Town Administrator. Thank you, Vanessa. Until 2015, we had a classification and compensation system with grades and steps. Raises were built into the steps. So if Brian was at grade three, step three, and did a good job, the next year, he got a raise to step four. It was the responsibility of the Personnel Board to periodically review the salary tables and make recommendations on adjustments. My understanding is, the Personnel Board did this, and that the increments between steps were typically in the range of 2% to 4%. Correct me if I'm wrong. Occasionally, a reduction or a freeze if we had a really tough year. In 2015, the Board adopted a new compensation and classification system, and steps were out. We went to a system with grades and bands: minimum, midpoint, maximum. Since there were no more steps, there were no more increases between steps, the Personnel Board had to devise another method for determining annual raises. The minutes from 2016, which I read this afternoon, reflect that department heads came to the Personnel Board and advocated zealously for raises in the range of 2% to 12%. So, a bit of a variance there. The better the department head was at advocating, the higher the raise. I joined the Board in September 2017. At my very first meeting, our longtime Vice Chair, Russ Milholland, urged the Board to standardize the raises. That year, we approved an annual adjustment of 2.25%. This figure was based on an average of what other towns were doing for raises. We tried to keep to that number, but occasionally, we received pleas for a higher raise, and we did make exceptions. In 2018, we approved an annual adjustment of 2.5% for salaries for FY 19. Again, the figure was based on the average of what other communities were doing. With Mr. Ballantyne's help, we also recommended to town meeting to increase the full-time salaries in Schedule A by 1.65%. That was an approach based on the three-year average of the CPI. In 2018, we put performance evaluations on a consent agenda and passed a policy of capping raises at the maximum of the annual adjustment, no exceptions. So why am I here tonight? It is budget time again. I am told departments are anxiously awaiting the guidance of the Personnel Board on the FY 21 salary increases. Whether we go with a one, or a two, or even a three, these raises are a tiny fraction of the town budget. Last year, Mr. Ballantyne calculated for us that each 1% raise in SAP salaries amounted to $16,400. So that means that the entire raise of 2.5% for all SAP employees cost the town $41,000 in FY 20. And I would be remiss, given the previous presentation, if I didn't mention, that does not include whatever addition that makes to the pension burden of the town. That's strictly on the payroll. Correct, Brian?
Yes.
So to the extent that post-employment benefits are affected by salary, there's an additional cost to the town. That was not something that the Personnel Board got into and would be beyond my pay grade. But in light of the foregoing discussion, I feel like I at least need to raise, that the focus of the Personnel Board is the current salary increase, not the effect on pensions and post-employment benefits. And I'm not suggesting in any way that $40,000 isn't real money, but I just want that amount to be viewed in the context of our $55 million-plus budget, which I think that's what it was last year. So, Mr. Ballantyne is here. Thank you very much. And he can update the numbers for FY 21. So while the numbers that we're talking about are relatively insignificant compared to the entire budget, the salary increase is very significant to our 60-plus or minus SAP employees. It is as important to them as the union contracts are to the union employees, and it's as important, the raises are as important to SAP employees as they are to the managers who get to negotiate their own contracts. Last year, the Board met with Mr. Ballantyne and Mr. Purple, and we heard from department heads and considered the following in looking at the annual adjustment: external comps, union salaries, the internal financial situation of the town. We also received information about salary increases for managers with contracts, and the Board debated whether or not that would be relevant to our determination. So, I'm here because I'd like to hear from you about what factors you think are important for the Personnel Board to consider in setting the annual adjustment for SAP employees for FY 21. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Ballantyne.
Good evening. So Ms. Rosenbloom took most of the information in a very fine manner and went through it. So, we're pretty much trying to come to the Selectmen, the Board, and get maybe a policy in place of a way of doing this annually, instead of struggling with it. It's sort of been a struggle over the years with different methods and different sort of ways that we come to this number. I've talked to the Town Administrator and Ms. Hale and some others. And I think, at least with the Town Administrator myself, I came up with a, this is just one method. I came up with a, the union contracts, I went through them all, and eliminated the top and the last steps and the bottom steps, because there can be outliers in the contracts, and took an average of all the steps in between in the colas, and it came out to about 2.82, well, it came out to 2.82%, which to me, kind of made sense as maybe a suggestion to use that. Sort of, you've got to remember, the non-union employees don't pay dues either, so they get a little bit, a tiny boost there. So 2.82, kind of makes sense. You could hang your hat on that and go forward. There's, I mean, you could cut this 1,000 ways, and there's various things private industry does, things that we've done. They go 2.5%, which didn't really make any sense. It was just because everything's 2.5%. But I think, at least as far as the Town Administrator myself, we thought that might be a good way to recommend to the Board to move ahead. Budgets are due this Friday. So, not that we can't make changes, we absolutely can. And I'm not going to say, you know, the Board doesn't have to decide tonight, but it would be great if we could nail this down this week, just so we can get all the budgets done for Friday. It helps the departments. But again, what we'll do with the Board wants. I think that's pretty much all I have to add to the discussion. It is a policy decision, so this would be the Board's purview, one of mine. But that's what we recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Just to make clear, the Personnel Board is reserving the right to vote the annual adjustment, as it has in the past. I just thought, and my Board concurred, that given that these are 60-town employees, and you are the CEOs, and they are very valuable employees, that it was worth broadening the discussion. I don't know if that was done in the past, if there was a discussion with the BOS, but I felt like I should get out from behind the desk of Personnel Board and have a discussion. And that's why I asked for this meeting, and also invited Advisory to join us, to broaden the discussion, so that all the great minds together could do the best for our SAP employees. But I'm not particularly asking for a vote of this Board, and I'm not asking for you to pass a policy. I'm just asking for your best wisdom and what you would like to see the Personnel Board consider when they do this. So, hope that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Healy.
I think the items that you mentioned are all good. And I guess I'd like, what would be helpful for me is to see how, what the interplay of those are. And by that, I mean the, taking into account the Consumer Price Index. I think that's a valuable tool to look at. And standardize. I mean, obviously, the last thing in the world we want to do is be guided entirely by what other towns are doing. But it is informative, because in some respects, we're going to be competing for employees with other towns. And on the one hand, we don't want to be way ahead of them, but we don't want to be way behind them. So knowing what they're going to do. And then, obviously, the, there is a fairness and an equity issue. So I think what you've done in terms of looking at the union contracts makes an awful lot of sense, because you don't want one category of employees in the town just by the luck of the draw or unluck of the draw. Because they're in a union or not in a union, they're treated dramatically differently by the town in terms of their salary outlook. So those are the sort of, the other factors other folks are interested in. But the ones you touched on are the ones I'd be interested in seeing on an annual basis, because it gives context for making the sort of decision that you're asking us to make.
Ms. Brosio.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and having this discussion. I think it's always good when everybody can be on the same page and have input, and give you our kind of eye thoughts on what we have. So, I think it's great, Brian, the process that you used to come up with this. I think it's equitable, and I think it's a fair way to do things. I do think it's interesting to still keep in touch as to what other towns are doing as well. But I think in fairness to our SAP employees, which are non-union employees, obviously, I think this is really a fair way, an equitable way to do that. So, again, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom Personnel, for coming in and starting this discussion with us and getting our input. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. Kalenda.
Nothing further than what my two colleagues have already stated. So, I agree with the process and the, some of the ideas that were, could help move it along. Thank you.
Mr. Stivers.
Thanks again for giving us an opportunity to weigh in on this. I think it's an important thing for a variety of reasons, as you suggest, in terms of motivating employees to think that there is the opportunity for raises, which most folks in the world do get raises periodically. I think that there's value in having some sort of a more defined process in the sense, I like the concept of looking at CPI. In fact, my understanding is the CPI for the most recent year has been increasing about 2.1%. Brian, I don't know if you have different data for that. And then you look at other towns and so forth. I don't mind being above CPI at some point, but maybe there's sort of a formula that says, we're going to take CPI for the most recent year and adjust it in some way, and have another adjustment for other towns, kind of thing, to define the process better. And I certainly have no reservations about a 2.82% or whatever percentage increase. I'd also, though, comment on a point. I've attended a number of Personnel Board meetings and heard a variety of discussions there. And I think that not only do you think about annual raises, but I think there's value in having some opportunity to have what could be loosely defined as merit pay component in all of this, to find a way to have people have opportunity to keep up with inflation, but for strong performers to be able to be differentially rewarded through maybe some sort of a pool arrangement or whatever. I don't know what the mechanism for that might be. But I would hope that the Personnel Board would consider, continue to consider that possibility, and find ways to add more motivation for people, as we heard tonight, there are employees who are extremely strong performers, and I think it's fair to reward them differentially. So, again, I certainly would support the proposed 2.82% increase and more formalized process for figuring out how we at least establish a range or the baseline. Thank you.
Mr., sorry, Ms. Brosio.
Can I respond, or do you want me to wait till everyone's done before I respond to?
I'm going to go to Ms. Brosio first, and then I'll.
Just a quick comment, Sam. Just for reference, when Personnel has came in before, the Board was interested. I think it was unanimous. was interested, I think it was unanimous vote actually, to look at putting together something for a merit, so that is something that the prior board had been interested in as well, just for reference.
Good, I would be eager to see a proposal for that. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, if you read the consultant's recommendation that became our current system, it's a 2015 Compensation and Classification Report from Gov HR, and I'm sure Vanessa, Ms. Hale, would be happy to get you a copy if you're interested. The consultant did envision that we would have a merit component, however, that was not implemented at the time. It's something that the board touched on my first year. We have spoken to Mr. Purple about it and Ms. Hale. What we were told was, they have not found, Mr. Purple has not found, and I hate to speak for him, but Ms. Hale was present at those discussions, so if I get any of this wrong, please let me know. Hasn't found a municipal model that he thinks works, and it would be worse to have a bad merit system than no merit system at all. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think that we're going to, and it's something I'm told by department heads who come to open meetings, this is all on the record, that merit is something that's been discussed for a long time, and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think that five very part-time Personnel Board volunteers with other lives and jobs are going to turn around and create a merit system for this town without input from the professionals who work for the town. I think it has to be something perhaps comes on high from the Board of Selectmen and says, this is a priority for our Personnel Director. I keep pretty busy just keeping on track. It's not an excuse, I'm just being realistic. I don't think, for all the years that it has been discussed, it hasn't happened with volunteers making it happen. We meet once a month for ninety minutes to two hours, if I'm lucky, so, I'm just not sure it's going to happen unless it's made a priority for our administration in town and for our employees, so.
So, I'd been asking for this for quite some time, and, you know, it.
Yes, Mr. Kalenda, the last time I was here, Mr. Kalenda asked about it.
And I just want to, seeing as Mr. Purple's not here, we can, I suggest we direct that he provide us an update with, you know, some, what he's been able to find or not find, what other, you know, towns have been able to do, do we need to get a consultant in, and, you know, I think we owe it to our highest performers to pay them the most we can for the great work that we do. I mean, you know, there's a customer service component, Mr., you know, Mr. Robbins has talked about it quite a number of times, you know, those who provide great service and support, those employees should be compensated well, and, you know, we want to incentivize them to provide our residents with the very best services that they can, and, you know, when someone comes in and they get great support and service, and then, you know, their manager hears about it, we hear about it, I want to reward them. You know, those that come in and, you know, just do the minimum, okay, you know, you'll get paid what you get paid, but those who come in and for the same pay do more, I want to see them rewarded for that, so.
I don't think you'd find a big disagreement on the board with that, Mr. Kalenda.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I'd like to see Mr. Purple come to us, hopefully, in the very near future, with what options we might have to move this forward for once and for all.
So, he's got an item too for his administrator's report at our next meeting, so.
Good.
And I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but if anybody has a thought about whether or not you think we ought to, there are, I don't know, maybe six to eight town managers who have private, who have individual employment contracts, per state law. It's a decision of the Board of Selectmen whether or not they can have those, they do, from the Town Administrator on down to some of our managers. I don't want to put anyone on the spot if you don't have an opinion, but that is something that was brought to us by a couple of department heads last year, whether or not that should be considered, how, the rates of increase for employees with contracts. And if you don't have an opinion, that's fine, too, but that's something the board heard last year and wrestled with whether or not that should be a data point.
I guess my reaction is that that data is, it's a pretty small sample, it's relatively easy to put together, and having the data is certainly going to be a potential benefit, it can be ignored if we don't find it particularly relevant. So, I guess my reaction is more information is better than less information, and it sounds like it's relatively easy to compile.
Yeah, there are not that many.
Yeah.
And I'd also comment that consistency is important, so I think looking at the entire set is useful, and think about how we deal with the entire group consistently.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
I just want to see if anybody else from my board. I'm accompanied by Jay Dietz, Dave Nixon, and Dorian Jazinski. Anybody have anything? Thank you. All right, I just want to acknowledge, we've got a great board, and Barry Rubenstein, who could not be here this evening, and it is an honor to be the Chair of the Personnel Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great update. Next scheduled appointment, Tim Davis, Recreation Director, on a recreation update. Mr. Davis, welcome.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, good to see you back since your appointment, Ms. Rooney, welcome. If you just want to take a minute, too, just to introduce members from the Rec Commission who are here as well. Same question, is everything you're going to put up there already in front of us, so I don't have to?
Actually, no.
Okay.
It's an update. I'll put it to your attention when it comes. So, good evening, Tim Davis, Recreation Director. I am joined here by Alexandra Rooney, our Program Coordinator, as well as various members of my commission in the room tonight. I'm actually not sure who exactly is here, but I saw them trickle in. So, we want to just take a couple, about ten minutes or so, and just provide an update on our department. As you know, our department has gone through a unique situation where we've had a significant turnover of all full-time staff within the last three months, and since then, there's been a lot of movement on projects, on processes, on just day-to-day things that have gone on our department, and we want to voluntarily take it upon ourselves to come here tonight, Alex and myself, to speak to those things. And before that, I just want to say thank you to the board for your participation in Heritage Day yesterday, who was able to make it, as well as all the public. It was a great day, Alex and I are very tired, but we're here. So, we broke tonight's presentation down into five different things. It's really what we've been up to, is the first is rebranding of our department, which we'll dive into, improving our public presence and accessibility of our services and our programs and our platforms. Alex will speak to current programming as well as future programming that we have kind of lined up to come very, very soon, and then the big meat of everything, which is the current and future facility improvement projects and capital items that we have on the table currently, shovels in the ground, shovel-ready, and things that we're looking forward to in the very near, very, very near future. So, we'll start with rebranding, this is one of the things that you won't see on there. So, upon the start of both Alex and my positions, we took, we took some significant time and we looked at our logo, and it may seem small to a lot of people, but for us, you know, when we look at a logo, we look at the brand of our department, we look at what people, what people feel when they see our name, Southborough Recreation, what they expect, and, you know, the overall sense of meaning when it comes to a logo representation of our department. And when, you know, I actually, this was something that caught my attention when I was interviewing for the job, before it even was offered the position, and the thing that caught both of our attention, it was very generic, it was something that was very common, I think, when you look at logos and pictures across the state. And to back that up, we did a simple Google search of, what did we do, community logo, and we came up with a lot of examples of exactly what ours was based off of, and we're not here to, you know, make fun or bash previous administration of our department because we spoke to them about this, and they even said they felt it was very generic. So, we thought this was a good starting point for the both of us to really look at our department, you know, what do we, what do we value, what do we produce, what do we hold as important of output of programs, of just community development of programs and our image in our community, and the, behind you, this is what's new, is really what we came up with as a, what we believe is a fair representation of who we are as our department, and we're going to run through them. So, we broke everything down into four, four real logos on top of Southborough, and the first on the left is a represent, representation, excuse me, of what we believe of arts and culture. When we look at our program offerings, we offer everything that is very traditional and generic, you know, drawing, painting, cooking, sewing, but we're also exploring and we're offering alternative programs, more specifically, to meet the trends and the needs of our youth, whose interests are changing by the day. We now offer programs that are new of video game design, of 3D printing, computer arts, computer design. So, that first, that first piece of it is really, you know, past and traditional programs mixed with the new. The next is very, I think, self-explanatory of our community events, Heritage Day, summer nights, our Halloween town party, summer concerts, as well as some new community programs that we have in the works that we'll be speaking about today, and that would be that second piece. The third piece would be our athletics. I think everybody knows that REC is very well-known for the gobble-wobble, but, you know, besides that, you know, what we really do, and, you know, when you take a deep dive into all of our athletic offerings, it's really rec-driven, non-competitive sports, you know, that range from running and 5Ks to archery, football, karate, you know, tennis, skiing, but really with the sole focus on being active, making sure that people are getting outside, being healthy, and just moving, but in a way that's constructive, in a way that's continuously learning. And then the last piece is kind of self-explanatory as well, it's our facilities. REC, not many people may know, people may, again, I've only been here two months, so I'm not sure, but, you know, we're responsible for three of the main playgrounds in town out of our department, with the help of the DPW and other services. We have seven field locations, and we have multiple, multipurpose sports surfaces. So, that really represents kind of the facility piece, the facility management and constant development of our town. So, Alex and I worked on this probably for about two months, and I think it was this morning where we finally were like, okay, we're happy with this, so. So, we're excited, you know, expect to see it, hopefully you're excited, too, expect to see it around town as we begin to rebrand kind of, you know, where we are in town, our buildings, our apparel, our staff, everything of that nature, our events. So, that was a big project that we're pretty proud of from where we are today. Next one would be public presence and access, as I said. A lot of things that we did, again, with Alex and I just sitting at the table in our office, really fell under the idea of common sense for us, and the first one was solely based off of community feedback, and that was our homepage. We had many, many people call, many people that we called to help, and just, you know, general people walking into our office that kind of expressed their concerns that our website was really hard to use, and it was really hard to navigate. So, within, I think, two weeks of us being there, we kind of flipped the whole thing on its head, so we streamlined our website, it's very user-friendly, it's really, you know, large buttons, easy access, so we made some significant updates to that. We streamlined and we kind of gained full access to all of our social media pages, access was kind of scattered with many people in town, so we brought all that back in-house, and we were working very diligently to try to grow that base as it's kind of a, kind of a, you know, unnecessary evil to have, I think, these days with all the social media that's out there. We're looking into updating our actual registration process with new registration software. We're working very diligently on that, Alex and myself, as well as Denise Mayer in our office, and we're hopeful to roll out a whole new software system, hopefully by the turn of the year, if all works out, that we're very excited for. It's super simple on the public side, but even easier on the management side, so I think it's going to be a win-win for the town and for our staff, both part-time and full-time. And then the other piece is facility calendars. None of our calendars, none of our information when it came to all of the facilities in town was public. If you had a question or you wanted to know the access or the availability of one of our facilities, you had to call, and if no one was there, you had to wait a day, and if it was Friday night, you had to wait till Monday type thing. So, again, a kind of a no-brainer thing we thought of, so now if you log on to our website, all facility calendars are public, so if you're looking for a field, if you're looking for space, whether for a sport team or a birthday party, log on, a couple clicks, you're going to know right away, so. It's paid off greatly already with a lot of in-town groups, out-of-town groups, families just looking to use the town that, you know, they're paying taxes to use, so it's really been great. So, I will turn it to Alex to talk about programming.
So, every session, we offer about forty-eight RAP classes, which are the after-school programs. Those classes reset after every five weeks. They've been doing.
Sorry, I think your microphone's off.
Oh, it might be off. That would be Mrs. Savelli.
All right, is that better?
No, still not, Terry?
Not to Terry.
No?
Ryan's coming to the rescue.
Ryan's the rescuer.
Okay. So, I will repeat what I said, our after-school RAP programs, every session we offer about forty-eight classes within the four schools. Every five weeks, we reset those classes, some are the same and some are different. We also offer a lot of alternative programs, cross-country at Trotter is very popular. We offer some preschool programs on the weekends, soccer, you know, all different sports. We've been offering skateboarding at the REC facility, which is very interesting to watch these little guys skateboard. We are starting a ceramics adults class on Sundays, that's something that we've never done, but it seems like there's some interest in town. Recently, we just decided to offer two half-day field trips for the Neary and Trotter School. One is to Apex and one is to.
Urbanaire.
Urbanaire, and so those should be interesting, myself and Denise will be going on those field trips. The utilizing data to drive our offerings, we don't offer any programs on Friday, the reason that we do that is we believe that the programs should be running when we're in the office. We've gotten a few phone calls of, hey, you know, we need some extra support, or they have questions, or it's raining, we need you to cancel, and if we're not in the office, we can't contact the parents. It seems to be going really well, our Monday-through-Thursdays classes sell out pretty quickly, so we don't seem to see a big problem with that. We had to repair a few relationships with some vendors, we had to find a lot of new vendors, some that just weren't willing to work with Southborough REC anymore, and then some that, you know, were willing to give us another shot, but we've also met some pretty great new ones, like the Skateboarding Company and some awesome ones that Tim brought with him from Stoughton. So, for future programming, we've been looking to expand our classes at the REC office, kind of using the upstairs for more activity, hopefully some pre-K activity during the day, during the week, also some indoor play, soccer, karate, we have a karate class that runs there on Mondays and Saturdays, and offering like adult yoga and things like that. We work very closely with Southborough Public Library, Ryan, and Youth and Family Services. We're helping youth and family with some meeting and program space upstairs. We have decided to take over their summer concert series, we kind of felt like that was more of a REC than a youth and family. We also took over their Halloween party, which is next Friday, and we're hoping to work closely with Ryan to do some movies in the park this summer, kind of opposite our summer concert series, so we're pretty excited about that. And lastly, rugby is becoming the new thing, I guess. We are offering winter clinics through the Algonquin Rugby Team, along with helping them form a youth league. One of the Eagle Scouts kind of did that as a project last year and kind of came to us for help to form a league, and we have taken that under our wing now.
Just to go back on something she said, something that I think is really unique to Southborough, this will be my third town that I've worked in, in a recreation capacity. Traditionally, in towns, there's always a fight between recreation and the schools when it comes to facilities, and there's always a fight between recreation and libraries because of free program, because of state funding. That's not something that we're finding here, which I just think is amazing, and I just want to say that publicly. Starting to work with Ryan has been a ton of fun, some of the things that we've discussed are very, very exciting, so we're really looking forward to that, and the schools. Support for the capital projects and the facility improvement projects that we're about to dive into. Being on their grounds and outside of their schools during the day has been a wonderful experience so far, something that would probably be a headache for, for most, but I think that in this town, everybody's on the same page, so I just wanna say that publicly, that, that everybody has been so supportive of, of one another, especially with Alex and I being new and throwing some crazy ideas out there and them not yelling at us back because of these crazy ideas, everyone's been really receptive, and it just makes it so exciting kinda going into the future. So I'm just gonna run through, you know, a, a, another unique situation. Coming into a, a recreation director position is that there is a ton of capital on the table of projects, projects that are shovel-ready, projects that are nearing that, projects that need to be put out to bid, and a whole list of projects that you wanna look into for future. And we have about five or six that are pretty active right now, so I just wanted to provide an update of what we've been able to accomplish, really within the, and this is something too, I put pictures in our presentation, so you can see. This is something that we've been working on, again, for the last two, two and a half months since I've been there, it's been here, and where we're at with each one. This is more of an update of, again, where we are, but also just an update looking forward into town meeting and into budget season in case there is anything to expect. I don't think there is, but again, just throwing it all out there. So the first one is the Trotter Track. We are just about done with that project. That was something that was ready to go as soon as I got here, and I jumped on that very, very quickly. On the left, you can see that the track was in very, very dire need, kinda the, the black and the clay is the cement that's underneath it, so it was very rundown, and it was time. And on the, the right, what you see was taken last week, when our surfacing aspect of it was complete. Yes, I know there are no lines yet, that was Mr. Purples' first comment to me. The, the project itself was pushed back tremendously because of the changeover in the office, but also because of the hurricane that made its way up the coast. Contractors were pushed back significantly. So that construction started on the first day of school, which was awesome, and no headaches for anybody involved.
And you still have a good relationship.
I'm trying, yeah, yeah. So it feels great, it looks great, smells great when you're out there, but the lining should be done by the end of the month, we're hopeful. We admittedly took our time figuring out the line. We didn't wanna just put down something generic and hope for the best. We took some time to make sure if we're gonna do it once, we're gonna do it right. We met with our track and field coaches, we met with the physical education teachers at the school and other staff who were involved out on that track to make sure that if you have a need, a significant need, that that is painted on. And those requests have been relayed to the contractor, so now we're just looking to schedule the time, so we're hopeful by the end of the week that is gonna be completely done. It is open to the public now, so if you're looking to go for a walk, absolutely, please feel free, but the lines, again, should be done in the next couple of weeks, and then we can kinda wrap that one up and put it in the books. The next one is the Petree, and this is our next, kinda I think our biggest undertaking. This field is located outside of Neary. This field was put out to bid, so the, the project itself has to do with re-sodding, re-grading, installing, irrigation, and grading to, to make it a level grade. Right now, it slopes into the parking lot a little bit, kinda causing a gully, which kinda causes some obvious drainage issues when we get some severe weather. This project was put out to bid prior to my coming into the office. The bids that were received were astronomical over what the money that we had reserved, which we were, which I'm not surprised about. Contractor is not, or the landscape architect was not surprised, just 'cause every contractor is so busy. I think they kinda just threw a number and hoped for the best. So we have put that out, that went back out, and that opened back up two weeks ago. We have a site visit this week for interested parties. We're seeing a lot of new names, which we're very excited about, so we have more interested parties. And then bids open and are due next Friday, so by the end of next week, we should know if we're in, if we're in, on the right path to getting this done, and hopefully if the price is right with the, the bids that come in. This will be a spring project, so shovels will be in the ground next spring for a couple of months to get this, this is all done. It's a relatively small field, so I wouldn't expect the project to take too long. So, so that's the, kinda the one on deck, so we're, we're excited to, to see what comes in next week in hopes we can move forward with that. The lights at Neary, I know this from what I've been told has been going on for quite some time. There was a request out from the planning board for a full site review to be submitted to the planners, the planning department and the board. I worked with our architect and we finalized it last week, it was, or two weeks ago, it was submitted in full to planning last week, and we have a meeting this week with the town planner to discuss next steps, getting the lights over to the tennis courts. Everybody wants them, as well as, you know, our department. Those, those courts are extremely, are, are used extremely heavily, and I just think it'll be great if we can work it out. So everything that was requested of us has been submitted, so hopefully we are on the right path and we can get those taken care of for the public.
Just want to clarify on that, so is that action then that the planning board has to take, or is it just review by the planner?
I believe they have to vote and approve the, to proceed with the project, I believe that's, that's my understanding of it, at least. Same, speaking of lights, over the baseball field, same situation. Admittedly, I am the reason why these are holding up a little bit. I was presented the plans from the architect and the engineer. I had pretty significant concerns about where they were putting some of the electrical, more specifically the main light bo- light box and control panels, where they had them positioned would have caused us to have to remove or replace existing structures, specifically the batting cage, and that would just cause more headache and, you know, more money of the project. So we sent the plans back, we explained it, the engineer is reworking the electrical. I'm being told they should have that in the next couple of weeks, and then we can move forward with that. We just wanna make sure that we're not disrupting more than we will. We, we kinda speaking with the architect and the engineer, there's no reason why we can't figure it out. Now, we're not sure why they were put there in the first place, but we are reworking those in hopes that we can move that forward as well. As I know, that is a hot-button item as well.
When do you expect the shovels to be in the ground on that one? 'Cause that one's been going on-
That's been going on for a while, I wish I could tell you, I don't wanna step on my own feet.
So give me, give me a, give me a guesstimate. This is, this has been going on way too long.
Mm-hmm, and I, I agree from what I've heard.
And are costs gonna go up? I mean, so-
Ideally, I'd-
Say it.
In an ideal world, next summer, I think, maybe next fall, if I'm playing it safe. Again, I'm not, I don't wanna dedicate myself to that with everything else going on.
All right, I appreciate the guesstimate, thank you.
Last little project that was brought to my attention fairly recently is the completion down at Fayville. There was a basketball court there, it was taken out due to the renovation. There's some money on the table from CPC to put that basketball court back in. So we are just figuring out our options of what size court we wanna do. My concern is that, and our concern, is that when we put the basketball court into the green space, we are taking away a significant piece of green space and open space down at that field, a field that is used heavily by the public, as well as user groups and youth groups. So we just wanna make sure the configuration of what we decide to do is as, you know, less disruptive as possible. We're gonna do it, I thi- I think we're all in agreement that it needs to happen, it was part of the original plan, and it was used heavily when it was there. It's just a matter of figuring out the, the correct dimension of, of what we wanna do. So again, that's kind of, that is on our mind, and that is in, in process. And then our last one is Calander Field. This field, the, the issue with this field that we have is drainage. When, you know, we, we get significant weather, we get a good amount of runoff off of that hill that spills out onto the field. At one time, the, the drainage was working. Over time, with erosion and, you know, all, all factors of weathering and land, the drainage on one side is, you know, for lack of better words, clogged up, it spills out onto the field, and when we have very significant rain, it renders the field really unusable. So this is a two-phase project, and we're just about finishing up the first one. We, we did a drone survey, we surveyed it, decided that work can be done to correct it relatively, you know, easy, kinda fixing what's already in place. And currently, right now, our landscape architect is putting together estimated construction documents to really give a sense of how much it's gonna cost to correct that field. This project, I mean, I'm sure everybody at home has, has gotten a sense that the town has been very generous to us when it comes to funding for the, for these projects. So with this, this project, we're going to try our hand at CPC funding for it as it is construction, it's not maintenance. So a application has been submitted to CPC for this project, and we are just awaiting to hear from them on their next meeting, so that we can come, sit with them, and discuss our needs, and discuss the, the issues that we're having out there, and where we're hoping to go with this field. It's a gorgeous field, it's a, it's a beautiful setting, it's, it's ample parking, it's, it's just a really great spot, and it's, it's used very heavily, especially by our youth leagues, so we would hate to see that get any worse than it is. Luckily, all of our fields are getting very well-rest because of our mosquito friends, so right now, everything, everything looks excellent, but we know when this is heavily used, it's heavily used, and, and it shows. So that was a quick snapshot of, of all the, the projects that we currently have going on in town. There are other ones that are on our minds, and I'm sure your minds and the public's, but these are the ones that we're, we're actively working on with the commission and within our office and the contractors that we, we have on hand, so. So we're very busy, we've been very, very busy over the last two months, but we're having a ton of fun, and it's, you know, it's been a team effort with everybody in our department, DPW, the administration staff in town, and other department heads helping us through and guiding us through as we're, we're getting, still getting our feet wet on everything. So again, that was kind of a two-month snapshot of what we've been up to, so if, if you have any questions, we welcome them, but we thank you for letting us come chirp at you a little bit, and yeah, leave it at that.
No, I certainly appreciate the update, and again, there's been, you know, a lot of support for recreation in the community, and it's just great to, to have this opportunity to give up a snapshot on, on all the items that have been supported and the status of where all those projects are. So I don't have any other questions beyond what we had during the presentation.
I always do for recreation, so, so maybe start at the other end and I'll, I'll be clean-up, or you want me to start?
All right. A couple of things. Well, first of all, just to, you mentioned the cross-country, is Jeff Bean still running that?
He's not.
He's not, that's a shame. Well, I suspect he probably left it in pretty good shape.
Yeah, he's still, he's still around, he still comes.
Yeah, great. You said the classes sell out a lot.
Yes.
Is that because that there aren't enough instructors, or there, there's not enough space, or some combination?
I would say probably, maybe a combination. A lot of them, like our STEM class is very popular, but they kind of, they like to do Finn and Woodward, both schools, so they don't really have enough staff to, you know, if they cap it at twelve kids in one class, if they go up to twenty-four, they don't need to bring another teacher, but maybe that teacher's teaching at Woodward that day. We've definitely thought about, you know, expanding it to maybe some teachers helping do RAP classes as well, but they seem to be doing pretty well, and then, you know, those classes that sell out, they always bring it back the next session, and then it sells out again, so it's, it's, it's pretty good.
Okay, I'm sure you folks are listening, are thinking about this, but obviously you don't wanna lose a consumer, and, and, you know, to the extent you can, you can have as few sell-out as possible, as few, you know, waitlists and the like as possible, that's great. You know, kudos for breaking down the silos and to the schools as well. I mean, that's just, that's, that, that is just terrific to hear. One of my pet, I won't call it a peeve, but one of my pet ideas is, you mentioned a number of different bodies, committees, et cetera, in town. The one, one you didn't mention was on the cultural side, and I've been, I've been trying to encourage them and encourage others to sort of try to integrate as well, 'cause they've done some terrific programs, and, and there might be some, I hate this word, but I'll use it anyway, some synergy potential there to, to tap into. On the funding side of things, particularly for the facilities, I had my eyes opened the last couple of weeks when EDC, and they've got some stuff coming up in a while, they successfully applied for a grant from the state, and in the whole package of, of responses we got from that, it turns out that the state, I think for a town like Southborough, the cap is a hundred thousand dollars, but a hundred thousand dollars is a hundred thousand dollars, is reasonably generous with funding for park-related, recreation-related things. You gotta go through a grant process and the like, and, and I know Mr. Styvers talked about the possibility of, of, you know, having somebody part-time dedicated to that, but I, I have, I have faith in, in, in you folks maybe taking a look at that, and I can, or one of us can show your, Vanessa, where that information came from. And then finally, the one other, the capital stuff sounds, sounds great, I, I was over on the track, and it's a lot more cushioned than it was, so yay. The Woodward basketball, is that on your screen? The court's great, it's not lined.
Right.
And that is so used.
Yep.
So is that in the offing?
I'm collecting quotes for it, it's, it's pretty expensive to, to get to the, the level that it was, but we're actively, we're, we're definitely pursuing it, 'cause it's, we know it's, it's used, and it kinda looks funny with just two holes.
It is amazing, how mi- that might be the most used, you know, you know, sort of ad hoc in town. So anyway, a great couple of months, and, and again, a terrific idea to get the reports as well. It's good to know what, what, what you folks are up to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Broschew.
Thank you. Mr. Haley took my thunder, I was gonna bring up the basketball courts as well, because I do get a lot of feedback, I'm sure we all do, you know, it is very used. I just wanna congratulate you on a successful first two months working together and working with the, the commission. I think you guys have done really great things, and you should all be very proud, so thank you, and thank you for coming in with the updates.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Clender?
No comments. Well done, great to have you both on board.
Again, thanks for the update, look forward to future updates going forward. I think it's, it's a great function that you folks provide in the sense that I think one of the things that's important, in my view at least, is sense of community and opportunities for community members to work together on a variety of things. I look at recreation, library, community center, senior center, and others as ways to bring people together in a variety of different ways, schools obviously through their various programs, et cetera, and the more mixing and matching we can do, things like Heritage Day and Summer Nights and so forth, gives people a chance to connect in ways that they wouldn't normally connect in, in their daily lives typically. So I would encourage you to continue to think about opportunities to do similar things and reinforce that sense of connectedness in the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks also to the members of the Recreation Commission for coming as well. Last appointment, request for a three-way stop at Pine Hill Road and Parmenter Road. So this makes its way back onto our agenda now. I believe this is the third discussion that we've had with respect to traffic issues on Pine Hill Road and Parmenter Road. I know our board has taken a number of votes in an effort to address ongoing traffic issues and concerns in this area. One item that we had to defer taking action on was the request for an action on a three-way stop at this location, and the board had agreed that, you know, before we make that decision, knowing that there are criteria that need to be met at the state level to support a three-way intersection, we wanted to have the data in hand to see how the traffic counts measured up against the criteria that we have. So the traffic count data was taken, the report has been prepared, the report is in our packet, and I gotta, I'll just jump to, to the report itself, knowing that there are five criteria that need to be met to support installation of a three-way stop in accordance with the criteria that the MUTCD establishes. The data shows that we did not meet any of the five criteria. So I'm just gonna start with a, just a question to the board, are there, but knowing the, the results from the study, is there anybody on the board that wants to make a statement with regard and, or to support a three-way stop at that location?
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Styvers?
Yeah, I saw the data and was a little surprised that none of the criteria were, were supported. One of the thoughts I had, I don't know, I don't see Ms. Gallagher in here, but are there other things that we might do at that intersection that somehow would satisfy whatever regulatory requirements there are? For example, a flashing light, if we had a, a flashing light, light yellow along Parmenter Edmonds and red up on Pine Hill, to at least warn people- Edmonds, and red up on Pine Hill, to at least warn people of potential danger and need for caution in that site, is that something we could do unilaterally, or would we have to get the state involved in that as well?
Again, I don't know the answer to that question. Unfortunately, Ms. Gallagher had a conflict this evening and wasn't able to attend, you know, we can certainly...
She was stuck in traffic on Pine Hill Road?
That's, that's not the case at all.
Okay. So, interesting question.
The issue before us, though, was the support of the three-way stop or not.
I mean, if we can't, if we don't meet the state requirements, I'm assuming that we can't do anything to put a stop sign there, is that right?
Well, you know, I don't know that we can't, but I think that we run the risk of taking on liability of adding a three-way stop that's not supported by the standards that are in place, and if there is an accident in the future, then that could potentially be pointed to as a reason for.
Is that a question that Town Council might have an opinion on? I don't know. That's, I'd be curious to know what that level is, that high liability, then that's one thing, if it's not much chance, then maybe something worth considering on our own.
I guess my reaction is, I mean, it's too bad Karen can't be here, because I'd like to, I mean, you know, she's much more expert in these things. You know, anecdotal evidence is a bad thing, but, other than this traffic study, it's all I got, and I specifically took a, you know, a cup, what, in a couple of hours, it was close to an hour, though, wandering around Pine Hill and Parmenter. I hadn't met up at that intersection for, for a while, and it was interesting to me that we heard from some folks from Parmenter, I don't know if they, yeah, see, there's a muggerage here, and I kind of get that there are obviously two very distinct views. The folks we heard from Parmenter, obviously, you may, I don't know if you saw the comments, they, they were, they were very much opposed to a three-way stop at the Pine Hill, and I get, I think a three-way stop is dangerous there. I also think the intersection is dangerous, which is why, in some respects, it, I would not be in favor of putting a three-way stop there, but, but it would be nice if something additional could be done at that intersection, and I don't, it's not my area of expertise. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not supportive, I wasn't supportive before I saw the data, just because having taken a drive up there, and as I said, anecdotal evidence is a bad thing, but it's all I got, other than now this data, and it just struck me that a three-way stop there, I'm not sure is a, is a panacea for dealing with, with very real issues that exist, and obviously, some folks who live on Parmenter have a, have a similar view. So I think it's something we need to wrestle with, and I'll also say, we've, we've heard from some other roads, and I think it's an issue that we're going to have to wrestle with, not just for Pine Hill and Parmenter, but some other, I mean, our town, our roads are getting overused for a lot of different reasons, and that's not going to reverse itself, I don't think. And so I'm not in favor of it, but I think that we need to keep sort of exploring, hearing from the folks who are expert in these areas, to try to do the best we can for that, for that intersection, but I hear the folks from Parmenter that, that unfortunately, there's not an easy fix for dealing with what's a real problem, so.
Just to add on to one of the comments that you made, that Ms. Gallagher is looking into, and I know it was discussed, I think at the first meeting we had with Pine Hill and Parmenter Road area folks, was that statute that our board can adopt that is then further ratified at town meeting, which gives us the ability to do more with speed limits throughout town, and that's something that Karen is putting a recommendation for. I expect that to come before our board as well, so that's something that we can implement, again, further for this area, but throughout town as well, to address traffic safety in all areas of the town.
One final thing, because I'm guessing from this that you're probably going to have something to say to us.
If I may.
One question I did have is that, is that when you get to the end of Pine Hill, and you hit Parmenter, is that private property on both sides? I don't, I see, I see some heads nodding.
On, on the, on the Pine Hill side, yes, opposite is Callahan State.
Yeah, opposite really is not, but, but the, but the two parcels on either side are both private property?
Yes.
Okay.
And the owners are here.
Oh, okay, well, that's good, all right.
Brian, can I make one comment about your comment? There are two sections of state law that I hope Karen is working on, the Chapter 90, Section 17(c) is the 25 mile an hour limit in thickly settled areas, and then Chapter 90, Section 18(b) allows us to establish safety zones, nebulously defined, where we could declare 20 miles an hour. I'm not suggesting that we do that here or anyplace else, but I think those are good toolkit, toolkit elements to have, and that those require town meeting votes, so that would need a warrant article, is my understanding.
My understanding is that Karen is working on both of those, and recommendations on both of those items for us at a future meeting.
Good, thanks.
So, any of the board members? Ms. Broschew.
Again, it's tough sitting next to Selectman Haley, he steals my thunder here.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to wait, but you've got to tell me to stop.
I know, I had a lot of the same comments that, that he had. The only other thing I may add is I also don't support the three-way stop there, I think it creates a lot of other issues on top of what's there, but also, there are, there may be other ways that we should continue to explore. I know Mr. Stivers mentioned a light, and specifically, I looked down on Oak Hill, anybody that's been on Oak Hill and Oregon Road, there's been a ton of accidents there, they've got this big old light that you just can't miss, and for the cars that are stopping even, it's like lit up like, it's all LED, and it's, it's constantly flashing, even on the stop sign, so I think that there is other opportunities for us to try to find a way to do something to make that area safer, it's just continuing to explore what it is, and unfortunately, I don't know that the three-way stop, I was initially on board with the three-way stop, and then again, I went down there, as Mr. Haley did, and had some concerns, and I know as well, some of the neighbors had reached out to the board as well, so unfortunately, at this time, I don't think that's the option, but I think there are other things we can certainly pursue with the speed limits and potentially additional lighting that we could put there, so, thank you.
Are there other options, maybe these have already been considered, but dangerous intersection signs, or something else that, you know, could be, could be done?
Well, you know, and again, we did recently support some modifications as well, adding the yellow line, having the speed feedback, the driver feedback signs, giving indication on speeds that folks are traveling, and those aren't fully implemented yet, so those are still actions that, you know, it's, we need to see what kind of effect and what benefit those might have as well, so.
I still like the lighting stuff in the sense of maybe signs that say dangerous intersection ahead when radar controls, so if somebody's going more than 30 miles an hour or something, it turns on the LEDs or something like that. Maybe Ms. Gallagher has seen things in other towns that people have used in these kind of circumstances, so I'd ask her to propose us.
I think the driver feedback signs have been able to help to serve some of that function as well.
Depending on where those are located, yeah, around the intersection maybe, so.
Ms. Tominy.
Okay, Lisa Tominy, 105 Pine Hill Road. You have a presentation, I apologize for the many trees that were killed in the process of providing it, I did call and tried to get this projected for you all, but apparently that was not to be had. So, the presentation you have, the beginning of it is summarization, covering some ground I think all five of you are probably familiar with. I know I sent the, some of the work that was done in 2015 ahead, hopefully you all saw that. Okay, good. So the accident data covered up to a certain point, and I believe that Karen was getting from 2015 forward from Southborough Police as part of her follow-on work. If you go to the third slide in, the car versus motorcycle, again, a little historical context for where this is all coming from, and then you get to the photographs, which again, the three on the first set of picture slides were in the email that I sent to you, but again, I know this goes out to more folks, it'll be on my Southborough and such, so for completeness, those are included. When you get to the slide called History, it talks about the fact that, you know, at the Pine Hill and Parmenter area, the response time is very lengthy for fire and police, there are also no hydrants in the area, so having an intersection that is as dangerous as that one is a greater concern, because there are no hydrants, and it's an eight-to-nine minute response time at best for police and fire, and when they get there, if there's no water, they have to either run the lines very far, or they have to tap the cistern at Metcalf, which doesn't necessarily always do what it's supposed to, is my understanding. So in 2015, there were two petitions signed by residents of the neighborhood, the first to address safety at the intersection, and the second to address traffic volume and speed issues, and no one that we can find believes enough is done on either front, and I don't think any of you agree that enough is done on either front, right? So, so if you look at it on the positive, you have 100% agreement from any person you can find that the intersection is not safe, and neither are the roads. I think there is belief that some things will help, like the double yellow line down the middle of the road the whole way, might help in some circumstances, but it's not going to solve anything, there are no panaceas, as you guys said. When you get to Part 1, the intersection, that is the greatest concern, and so, the intersection I've highlighted, the part of the petition that went four years ago, was signed by 57 residents, and while the investigation was done, there was some limited work done, really, the measures did not effectively improve the safety, and I don't think anyone here would argue that they did, even in, I don't, do you all know that there's a very lively email group for the residents in that whole neighborhood? So there's been a lot of lively dialogue, no one has ever disputed that we need more safety at the intersection, it's which measures are appropriate, and what would be first choice, and what's expensive and what's cheap, but at, at the end of the day, everyone is still in complete agreement that the intersection isn't safe. Nobody wants to come up Pine Hill Road and turn right or left, because, unless you're in a pickup, then you can kind of see over everything, but if you're in any kind of regular car or small SUV, you still can't see. The speed of the vehicles coming down Parmenter is horrifying, and then you have pedestrians, walkers, joggers, runners, who get to the top of Pine Hill to cross over to Callahan State Park, because the gate is right there where they access that recreational facility, and it's not safe for them either. I believe one of the neighbors has been in touch with Karen Gallagher, her husband ended up with a broken arm, having to jump out of the ways of cars. You guys might know more than I do about that one. So, there's a photograph of the intersection there, from yesterday or today, the driver's view, top of Pine Hill at the stop line, when you look left, you see what you see, you see a tree, you see a wall, and you see brush, you do not see the cars that are coming. The next line shows where the stop line is, so again, clearly, if you're behind that stop line, you're not going to see a thing. And if you look at that stop line photo, you can see in front of the rocks, there's still all that shrub. Now, I know that DPW had their heavy equipment out, and they had that machine with the big arm that went along trimming the brush, but the stuff down low is still there, this photograph was taken this morning or last night, so that brush is still there, and so it's still obscuring the driver's view. Now we get to the good stuff. If any of you have insomnia, this is the slide to take home.
Can I ask you first, though? The, and it's the, the landowners, or the, maybe not the landowners.
My land.
Okay. Is, looking at this picture, is, is, is that all private property, or where is the private property line?
Sorry, you're going to go to a microphone if you're going to, sorry.
So, so, very new to town management and with a newborn.
Kevin Daly, 1 Parmenter Road.
Thank you.
And my question is, is, looking at the photos, I'm just, I'm just, just purely informational, where's the private property line, or does it go all the way out to the road? Does it go in five feet?
I think it's the stone wall, or somewhere in the middle of the stone wall, and then the town has a few-foot easement, which is basically the bank between the stone wall and the road.
Okay.
That's typically the way the road would lay out.
Right.
From the edge of the pavement to the right-of-way line, there is a gap before the private property would start.
Okay. And, so you're on the, this side?
Correct, yes, that, I'm on the west side of the intersection.
Okay.
You can kind of see a small little car behind the tree, it's the car, and then towards the left is where the, the house itself is, but all that property goes with the house.
And you don't have to answer one way or the other if you don't want to, but how do you feel about that stone wall?
My wife feels very strongly about the stone wall, but what I will say is...
Positively or negatively?
Positively.
Okay.
Keeping our two-year-old off of the road is the main purpose of it, but basically, I am obviously opposed to the stop sign, I hope you guys got my email, and I, there's a multitude of reasons, but basically, the accident data, since the trees were cut down in 2015, three accidents in four years is very, very minimal, it's not a great intersection, but it is, there's not a ton of accidents happening at it, even though it does seem unsafe at times, and there's a lot of places where you pull up to a stop line, and the line itself, you kind of have to do a little creep to see if there's cars coming all over the country. But what I will say is that I'm happy that you guys are somewhat in agreement with me so far, I am willing, I think the last owner of my property was not, to potentially work with the town to try, I don't know if it's possible, or how much it costs, or how it happens, but to, if we can widen the corner somehow, or something we can do to alter, I'm not going to get rid of the stone wall, but if we could alter it, or try to widen the corner, because the trucks turning is definitely, they get stuck sometimes, and then if we have cars backed up, it also, it's going to be just a traffic nightmare, so I am willing to work with the town, I'm not going to donate my land or anything, but I certainly will, will, I'm not going to hire a lawyer to stop them from trying to maybe get that big tree out of there, and if we can get a few feet for visibility and trucks to turn, I'm certainly open to some kind of solution to help the street, because it, the whole street is dangerous, people drive like crazy, they're on their cellphones, passing people, but, so, I'm definitely, I want to help, but I'm also going to continue to oppose the three-way stop, and a flashing light, I'm on the fence about.
Well, with, with the baby, I would imagine, but also, the town does have stone wall bylaws on the main roads, so that's something also to consider, which...
Yes, I know nothing about that.
Yeah, and welcome to town, anyway.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your newborn.
Thank you.
All right, so Ms. Tominy, why don't you run through the remainder of the presentation that you have.
Right, so the next slide addresses the stop sign criteria, and this is the part that I said if you have insomnia, you might try really parsing through this. There is a group of residents that met with the traffic consultant, the person that the town hired in 2015, one of the, one of the neighbors knows him, and he offered to meet with a group to explain the traffic report that they wrote in 2015, which I had cited last time, and to walk through the stop sign criteria, because what, what Massachusetts says is law, and I'm not an expert, but what Massachusetts says is law for stop signs is, if we don't have a law, the law is this Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. So, this excerpt is from the MUTCD on the website, and I've listed the website, so you can find it yourself and verify that this is in fact exactly and completely what it says. And the traffic consultant met with a group of residents and said, "When we did the traffic study in 2015, the data was close, but what we said was, if you want to improve safety at the intersection, here are the first things, if you were an engineer, here are the first things that you would do. You would take down the wall, you would regrade the road, you would do a variety of things. However, at that time, and those conditions exist today, that intersection does, in fact, still meet many of the criteria." And so if you read through here, multi-way stop control, in the green, right, multi-way stop control is used, where the volume on the intersection rolled is approximately equal, and then on the guidance, the decision to install multi-way stop should be based on an engineering study, not shall, but should, and the criteria should be considered A, B, C, and D, should be, not shall. The criteria for the intersection does meet number C, the minimum volumes of 1 and 2, and then if you look at the optional criteria, the need to control left-turn conflicts, A, also C, the locations where the road user after stopping cannot see the conflicting traffic, and is not able to negotiate the intersection, unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop, and D, an intersection of two residential neighborhood collector through streets of similar design and operating characteristics, where a multi-way stop control would improve traffic operational characteristics of the intersection. So, the consultant who was hired is the one who outlined this, this is in his 2015 report previously. The, I did not get a chance, I didn't realize that the traffic study and the data from VHB was in until this morning, but when I looked at it, VHB's report did not look at the optional criteria at all, so what VHB and their trap, but I don't know what they were hired for either, they did the traffic count, and it looks like they did a long report, but they, they only addressed the guidance on the first section, they didn't talk about there are optional criteria, that you can meet, and that, yes... didn't talk about there are optional criteria that you can meet, and that, yes, you can in fact install a multiway stop sign at that intersection. So the group that met with the previous travel, his name was Rob Micho. There was a lot of support among that group, and many of those folks are here, and I know some of them aren't, and I know some of them have reached out to you guys as well to express their support. If you go to the next slide on roadway classification, and again, I don't know how much of this affects VHB's assessment or their, what they sent back to you. But in 2015, in the engineering report, both Pine Hill and Parmenter were classified as rural minor collectors. In this 2019 report that I saw with the board package, they're listed as urban collectors. I don't know why the difference is there. I don't really know what that means in terms of, does that change someone's assessment of whether or not the intersection is appropriate for multiway stop? Again, in 2015, as I said, that report, the very extensive report done by MDM Traffic Consultants stated those three different bullets. And this 2019 report from VHB does not address that at all. And then the next slide you get to is requests for the intersection. The first request is to remove the vegetation at the corner. So there's a close-up shot of the wall and the vegetation there. Even clearing that down with a weed whacker would help some. And Kevin and I had a conversation about this yesterday, you know, he's like, "I feel bad not going out there to do it," but he'll get run over. You all know that. We don't, he has a newborn at home. We don't want that. His wife definitely doesn't want that. So anyhow, so first request is to remove that vegetation. The next request is the installation of a three-way stop sign at the intersection. And again, there's pretty broad-based support for that from the neighborhood. I know you've heard from some individuals that are concerned about it, but there is, when we did the survey in 2015 of the whole neighborhood, it was 75% of the neighbors who responded to the survey were in favor of a three-way stop. And I talked about the meeting that we had with the traffic consultant. And then if a three-way stop is truly something the town is unwilling to do, then an installation of a speed table at the intersection where those speed tables cover the entirety, right? So it's not a speed hump or a pillow or a bump. Apparently, there's a lot of speed thingies out there now. But the speed table starts at one side, goes all the way across and down. So it reduces the speed to something between 20 and 25 miles an hour, but it doesn't make the traffic stop. Apparently, it's easier for DPW and Plows to deal with in the wintertime. And it would have the effect of, hopefully, slowing traffic down enough that it would make that intersection more palatable without a lot of flashing lights, which I think there's very mixed support for. Certainly something to consider. But at the end of the day, the problem that the neighborhood has raised is the intersection isn't safe and more needs to be done. And we're not the experts. So we're trying to do research to understand what options exist and what are the laws and what can we really do and what can't we do. But at the end of the day, more needs to be done. We don't have all the answers. But what the experts have told us is you can look at X, Y, and Z. The last bullet here is the installation of a crosswalk for the pedestrians who are going from Pine Hill across to Callahan State Park. And that, if you did a speed table, you could do that in concert with a speed table, which would give pedestrians some minor measure of, you know, additional support. The reference information, I will not read. Again, good fodder for insomnia. But it does give you all the difference between speed humps, speed bumps, speed tables, what they do, how they're designed. And the reference information is there as well. Part two is the traffic volume and safety. So do you want me to stop at the stop sign part? Do we want to have a discussion? Or is this something, I feel like with Karen not here, there may be some follow-up that needs to happen, no matter what.
And again, you know, in all fairness to Karen as well, I think a lot of these questions aren't really questions for Karen, but they're really questions for VHB as well. So--
Right.
Karen is not a traffic engineer, so.
Yeah.
You know, but again, we, you know, we are, our agenda item is, was put together specifically to the three-way stops. I don't want to go too far astray respectfully. And I don't disbelieve anything here at all. I mean, it's there. It happens on, in that area. I'm sure it happens in many other areas of town as well.
I would like to, since we've got the other property owner here, you're on the other side of--
Yes, I am.
Just to get your view of, your view of things, you know?
My name is Susan Palmer, and I live at 107 -- oh. My name is Susan Palmer, and I live at 107 Pine Hill Road, right on the other side. I am for a three-way stop because I think the problem is speed. We need to curtail the speed, and the speed is coming down Parmenter. As the pictures that Lisa Tomlin showed you, where you could see where the stop line is and how far out the cars have to come before they can make a right or a left-hand turn. They're actually out in the middle of the intersection, and the cars are flying by. Now, with all due respect to everybody's opinions, I constantly hear horn blasting. I hear screeching. I hear people yelling. And I've had bodies in my yard, as you could see the stretchers there. Yeah? And that's more than once. So what I'm afraid of is that somebody is going to get killed. And my driveway is two car lengths from where the stop sign is. Yeah? So I always have problems getting in and out of my driveway. But I would really like to see something done to stop the speed, because that's the issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will, anecdotally, I will say, I had the occasion to go from Southbury to Belmont at nine o'clock. I had to be there at nine o'clock on a rainy Tuesday. So I pulled out my map, and I went through, I've never been on, I grew up in this area. I've never been on these roads before. It was through Wayland and Sudbury and Lincoln and I don't know where. Every last one of them, double yellow line down the road, stop signs every so often, speed humps, bumps, pillows, galore. Because every one of these towns east of here is dealing with these same issues. But they're dealing with them in this way. They are putting control devices in more rural characterized neighborhoods because it does seem to be the only way that's addressing the problems. And in terms of the agenda item as it was listed, I know it said stop sign. I know September 3, it said heavy vehicle exclusion. The agenda, as I understand it, from the neighborhood, has always been, we had two petitions in 2015, one for the intersection, one for the lengths of roadway, and those are the two things. And we don't have to cover part two now. We can save that to the next time. But I think there's enough people in the room and also at home that really want to make sure that this doesn't just kind of keep sliding along, because no one wants to see anyone get killed.
I think from the, from the, from the part two, from the speed, I mean, when I was over there, the lines aren't in yet, obviously. And the work that Ms. Galigan talked about doing on the sides, I know it sounds from her memo like she's evaluated some of that, but clearly, that hasn't been done. So I guess, I wouldn't mind hearing a thumbnail sketch of what you want to have to say about the speed, but--
You know, respectfully, though, I think that we've made close to a $50,000 investment in the driver feedback warning signs--
Yeah.
--that haven't been installed yet. So we're not seeing what effect those have. So, you know, before we start taking on, you know, additional work in that area, I think that we need to implement the, you know, the items that were recommended to us by Karen initially and see the benefits of that before we start taking on additional actions.
Oh, I agree. I agree completely. No, I was just, is there something that hasn't been said to us before that prompted us to take these steps that you have to tell us tonight, since you're here?
Well, for example, the dynamic feedback signs for drivers to calm the traffic. The traffic engineer that we talked to said, "If you don't place those signs in the right place, they're not going to have the effect you want them to have."
Again, respectfully, they haven't. Nobody said they're being placed in the wrong place either. And--
Right. The only point is, it's probably better to figure that out before they get installed.
Yeah. And again, we have installed those on a number of roads in town, Flag Road being one of them. We had major traffic issues reported on Flag Road. And I've received positive feedback from the driver feedback signs that we've placed on that road. So I certainly have all the confidence that in installing them, we'll install them in the right location so that they serve the intended purpose, so.
Brian, can I make a comment about that, please?
Yep.
I think I'm all for the driver feedback signs. I think that it would be very interesting to actually do some measuring to see whether they're doing anything or not. And the stealth radar units I talked about previously, to be able to measure traffic speed and times, if we had one of those out there now or soon, before those signs are put in place, and then after the signs are put in place, to see if they actually have any impact on average speeds, maximum speeds, and so forth, I think that could be an interesting piece of data to figure out, are the signs actually slowing traffic there, or is there still a problem? And you could use that same kind of thing, if you put in speed bumps, tables, or whatever, to, again, measure the effectiveness of speed and have some real data to be able to talk to the residents and say, you know, "Average speed was, you know, 49 miles an hour, and now it's 56," or whatever. So anyway, I would suggest Karen might look into that and see how big a deal it is to get one of those and install it and do some pre-measuring on the signs. Thanks.
Karen Muggerich, 15 Parmenter Road. You got my communication, so I won't go into that. But very specifically relating to what the property owner on the west-hand side of the Parmenter, Pine Hill Road, the, where the stone wall was, the intention in 2015 was to move that back a little bit. And that work was not able to go forward because of objections with that, the current property owner at the time. So what you see, what you saw on the handout that Lisa had with the stones kind of in the street was not the way it was intended to be left at 2015. So with, I believe, what Kevin is saying, his permission now and working with the town, that would, I believe, maybe be work that Karen would be willing to have done now, because she was willing to do that in 2015. So I would fully expect that the visibility at the top of Pine Hill, looking to the left, would be improved.
We certainly know how to move stone walls, based on the 85-30 intersection.
Yeah, we've heard some very good, I mean, honestly, and we were remiss in not saying this when you spoke, sir. And looking at it from a town's perspective, your perspective is incredibly appreciated. The idea, I mean, just what you said about trying to work with the town. And as Mr. Shea said, I mean, we're taking some steps, and let's see how they play out and see if they make some improvements. I'd like to think that they're going to.
The steps underway for the speed should help? There's still, I don't see any steps for the intersection yet. Am I missing it?
Well, one of the things we're talking about is cleaning up that left-hand turn, the left-hand turn side of it.
Right. If that moves forward.
Improving visibility, yeah. But I think there's strong support for doing whatever we need to do to do that.
Well, and in 2015, it should be noted, there was significant improvements made at that intersection. There were, I believe, three large trees that were removed. The intention was to have that stone wall moved back, which was not done. I believe it was on your property. Vegetation and hedges were cut. There was significant improvements made, and they made a big difference. So Karen Galigan and Chief Politis should both be commended for that. Now, is it a perfect intersection? No. And as per my letter, I think a stop sign, I wish it would help, but I think it will create more problems than it solves.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, do you think we could follow up with Ms. Galigan to see what was accomplished and what may not have been accomplished in the 2015 plan of action that they kind of put in place at that time?
Yeah, I think she kind of walked through that. And I get, I know that she had committed to additional cleanup--
Okay.
--to try and improve visibility in that area. I don't think that we had gotten to the level of discussion about, you know, reaching out to--
I can make a comment on what was done in 2015. Trees were taken down on our property and what is now Kevin's property on the other side of the wall. I think there was three or four trees that were all cut, that were cut back. But that was, that was the limit of it. So it helped, but, you know, there's more vegetation that's grown in since then. And so, you know, we're back to the same problem, that you have to go so far out into the intersection.
Thank you.
So it'd be great if we could have a proposal maybe from Karen at some point to say, with the cooperation of the residents at the corner, here's what could be done in terms of improving visibility here.
I think it'd be nice if she could set up a meeting with Kevin, just to--
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
With both property owners at the intersection to say, you know, what can we do? Yeah?
Yep. Ms. Ross.
Caroline Ross, 89 Pine Hill Road. With all due respect, Karen, I disagree with you entirely about the fact that what was done in 2015 has improved the safety of that intersection. It hasn't at all. You know, trees were taken down, but you still couldn't see. I mean, you know, the stop sign was implemented, but you still have to go into Edmunds Road and Parmenter Road to see whether there's any traffic coming. And as Lisa said, you're practically in the middle of the road when you're there anyway. So I'm sorry, but I disagree with you about that intersection. It has not improved it. The site, the site distance has not improved, and it just gets worse with the buildup of traffic. So that's just what I wanted to say also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Jim Betz, 62 Pine Hill Road. It was at my house that Mr. Micho came to. Rob and I have been friends for years. I spoke with him this afternoon. He has been in touch with Karen. He has offered his services to help place this electronic speed signs on Pine Hill as well as Parmenter, free of charge to the town. So that's something you should probably, as a group, should follow up with Karen. He has reached out to her, and they had a conversation, I believe, yesterday or Friday. And I think that it would behoove everyone, free is free. And especially since he is the author of the 2015 traffic report.
Okay.
It'd be a good thing to do.
Thank you. Sir?
So I just want to say that I think at the last meeting, you agreed to put the speed check signs leading up to the intersection both ways. So I think that is going to help the safety of it. Nobody seemed to mention that. There's, when you're approaching the Pine Hill Road from Framingham and Marlborough, you will have a driver feedback sign telling you're going too fast, which definitely slows people down. So, and the accident data, I know nobody, a lot of people in the street don't agree with me. The accident data clearly shows that the tree removal in 2015 has made the intersection safer. It's not even close. There were four accidents in 2015 and three in the four years since then. So, I mean, data is data, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All that said, what action does a board want to take on the item before us, if any?
So I'm--
Respect to the three-way stop.
And I, you know, a three-way stop, to me, I'm more supportive than less. So I think that a three-way stop, you're going to stop. You know, it's going to slow down traffic. I don't know, you know, I think the other measures we're putting in place are solid. I'm glad we're doing them. You know, if the will of this board is to wait and see what effect those have first, before a three-way stop, I'm fine with waiting for a short period of time to see where we get enough data to really make that determination. But, you know, a stop sign is going to slow them down to zero unless they're running it. And, you know, so I think it's an additional measure that we could do. Words mean something and, you know, great job in pointing out all the shoulds. They should be considered. Doesn't say they must be considered or have to be part of the criteria. So I'm more supportive of a three-way stop.
Yeah. Well, go ahead.
I'm not there yet, just so, in terms of taking the temperature of the board, that's not where I am yet.
I'm not either. Again, I would rather see the measures that we have acted to implement, put in place before. Again, I'm not saying never to a three-way stop, but at this point, I'm not convinced.
How much time do you, do you think we need to make that determination?
Well, we need to get, I think that we need to get the--
Yes. So how much time before--
You know, I have no idea--
Because I want to see, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of this. And I want to make sure it goes back on an agenda within three months, six months. I want to make sure that we do it.
Yeah. Well, I'm-- Yeah, well, again, I don't know what exactly the schedule is to install those feedback signs as well.
And I'd love to see if Ms. Galligan can come to our next meeting and discuss the vegetation issue and any other measures that can be done with that intersection to, to help with visibility. And then I'd love to hear from her, the timeframe that she thinks is needed, through any discussions she has with others, too, if she's not the expert, but the timeframe that we need to be able to make a, an educated decision on a three-way stop.
Any other comments?
I can just add one other comment.
Rossio.
Also, it might be helpful before this discussion comes up again to find out some of the differences Ms. Tominey mentioned as far as the requirements of what were used in the summary. You, you mentioned there were some pieces, some minimum volumes.
No, I think it's worthwhile to pass this along to...
Absolutely.
To Ms. Galligan as well, to get feedback.
Yeah, just so we could get some additional...
That's obviously, obviously fair.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Calenda's approach. As I said, I'm just not there yet.
It's okay.
And...
Dialogue, it's good.
Appreciate your passion and your information, I, I, but I'm, I'm trying to, to weigh, and as I said, anecdotally, I was there, and, and it's not an intersection that jumped out for a three-way stop to me. I understand folks can feel differently.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious as to what your concerns were, why you didn't think that it was necessary.
I'm not that tall, and I didn't have any trouble seeing left or right.
Were you at, were you standing at the line there, where the stop line?
Well, no, you stop at the line, and you, and then you pull up towards the intersection. I, I didn't have trouble dealing with the intersection. That, that, that's why I say anecdotal is tough, but that's my anecdotal, I, I went there on, on, on Saturday and, and played around with the intersection.
Saturday's a good day, because there are a lot of people go, go through there, and they go through very quickly.
Maybe I got a lucky day, so, but that was my, that's my reaction to it.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, I, I'm not opposed to the stop sign, but I would be interested in clarification from Karen, because I'd understood from her previous comments that we actually could not put one there unless we actually met all of the state requirements, which I thought were pretty...
So that's why I think it's worthwhile to give Karen this information to get that feedback.
I'd like to know, and if we clearly don't meet the requirements for the state, and therefore we are, in theory, not allowed to put a sign there, then it's a moot point, I think. But I'd like to understand that more clearly, because I'm now not certain, based on Ms. Tominey's update here, so, thanks.
Can I, is it too late to ask one last question?
One last question.
All right. Celeste Kimble, seventeen Parmenter Road. What I would like to know is, the traffic study that was done, did that look at traffic going straight across Parmenter to Edmunds? Because that's obviously going to be impacted by a stop sign, not turning on to Pine Hill either way?
My, my understanding is it looked at all the traffic flow at that whole intersection. Who turned, who went straight from each direction.
Okay. So just, just one last thing. So if, if that's the case, the, the people living on, in those houses right at that intersection on Pine Hill are never going to be able to get out of their driveways? So...
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
For next time, assuming there's a next time, and there's slides. When do they need to be, in order to be electronic? I tried sending them, or finding out how I could send them this morning, and...
Yeah, so ideally, that's something, again, it just, again, we've got a full agenda that we're only a short way through, as it is right now. Ideally, I like to have presentations of people that are going to have them, so that they're posted with our agenda packet, and that posting is typically done Thursday, Friday, depending on when our meeting is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to public comment now. I had bypassed that originally. Anybody with public comment? I am going to go on to reports. I'm gonna start with Town Administrator's Report. Couple things that I just wanted to make note of...
Excuse me, sorry, I just, is public comment, are you referring to the beginning?
I'm sorry, I missed, thought you had public comment. I didn't hear anybody was going to make public comment. Do you want to make public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If, if you're referring to item two.
I am.
Okay. Thank you. I am, Karen Hanlon-Chimkes, Lyndbrook Road. I, I'm, still remain gravely concerned about the item on the agenda regarding the special municipal employee policy. And these are policy observations, which is separate from the actual application. But this entire evening, I've listened to some respectful, you know, back and forth and difference of opinions being expressed, and that goes into a consideration of a considered opinion at the end and possibly a vote. On this issue, I've heard almost no consideration of downsides, and that's really very deeply concerning to me. When I look at this issue, I, I do think that there has not been enough time to, adequate time to review, and, you know, there certainly is a clear need for a full and healthy discussion on the matter. We need to work towards an understanding of what the downsides may be, because there's been absolutely no discussion of that whatsoever. And I have consulted with attorneys on that, especially legal experts who handle that area. I mean, not all attorneys are created equal, so there are some experts, and I have spoken with them. Just to reiterate, there is no confusion on the part of two sixty-eight A and SMEs, special municipal employee designation. So there was a comment after the last meeting that, hey, you might be confused. No, there's no confusion, and the people who do follow this understand the distinctions clearly. If you look at recent headlines from Boston out, again, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but there is a heightened awareness of corruption, corruption in Boston on conflicts of interest. I did give you a few headlines regarding that, and there probably will be policy changes, and maybe even state law changes coming out of that. And I think it's, you know, it behooves all of us to pay attention to that. Most municipalities do not have these policies. So we have a sample provided to us by your board, ten, twelve, fifty, I don't know what the number is, but this three hundred and sixty-five cities and towns, and most of them don't have this. So I don't understand what your explanation is to the taxpayer voters as to why we would loosen two sixty-eight A and existing safeguards for the public and the taxpayer. Like, why would you do that? I mean, this keeps everybody in their lane right now. I did pull, and by the way, the State Ethics Commission, we're told by one of your members, does not favor this designation, you know, PELMEL. You do have a board member who called and asked. There's not enough dialogue involving the public of potential downsides. I've heard the question asked, but, you know, no one mentioned any downside. I have a list. I'm asking you to please put this, these considerations before town meeting. You know, again, it's an environment of, of increased scrutiny on corruption, so it's important to pay attention to that. Where do the voters weigh in, the taxpayers? Like, you represent us, them. You know, where, where do they have their voice heard? I, I hope it's at town meeting. I realize you may go ahead and proceed with a vote tonight, and, but I would ask that you would hold off on do that, to have a full and healthy discussion, including opposing opinion. If you do proceed with a vote, then I guess you've not left a lot of room for the voters. I mean, we'll have to present a citizen warrant article. Nobody likes to do that and go through the work of doing that, but it would be non-binding, but it would be, give a sense of meeting, official term, and it would give voters a voice or a say in this. We definitely have room for improvement in this town for policy review, policy enforcement, or creation of policies. And I did look at one specific town, Walpole, had, has a really terrific policy and procedure manual, that we've been told by attorneys that we can't have one, can't have one. They've got one. It was written by attorneys. If you flip through it, I think you'll find it extremely helpful. And I think town volunteers and employees would, would find it extremely helpful, because you have a resource to turn to that isn't necessarily state law. We have a bunch of documents stapled together, and here's your, here's your, here's your policy. That's not a policy. A policy manual is like the one Walpole has, and it's excellent. They identify three common types of conduct that must be avoided. They, policy description, you may not receive payment from someone else or act for someone other than the town in performing your duties for the town. You may not act for the town in a matter which you have a financial interest, you, your partners, or your company. You may not have a financial interest in a town contract. You may not act in a way that would cause a reasonable person, any voter, any taxpayer, who is aware of the circumstances, to think you could be improperly influenced or show favoritism. That would include your clients, clients of your partners, or your firm, in performing your duties as a result of family relationships undue influence of another person. What happens when those interests collide? When you have a private client of your company or your partner, and those interests collide with the public interest? Stakeholders, neighbors, residents, the people who are paying the taxes in this town. A town employee may not violate this section, even if the employee's conduct does not amount to an actual violation. Policy, written by an attorney, we're told we can't have it. So the questions we're weighing here, what are the best interests of the residents in the town versus financial interests and private interests of clients, developers, whoever that may be? I would ask that you do take a look at this. It's a very helpful document, and I would ask that you please consider supporting a citizen warrant article, taking a look at this and putting the issue in front of the town.
Okay.
Because, again, even attorneys, I'm told by the legal expert I spoke with today, even attorneys may not understand or be able to articulate downsides, but a full and healthy discussion involves that. Here's a list of them. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. We'll now go on to reports. Town Administrator's Report.
Sure. Filling in for Mark for the rest of the evening. So just a quick couple of updates for you. The town received its pricing from the consultant we use on a successor contract for municipal aggregation, so I just wanted to report what those results were. The term of the contract is twenty-four months. The new basic rate is ten point ninety-two cents per kilowatt. The current rate is ten point eight-eight. The green choice rate would be thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents per kilowatt. And as a reminder, National Grid basic residential service rate is currently thirteen point ninety-eight. So right now, we have three thousand electricity customers participating in this program, which is about just under seventy-five percent of our residents, so. So that contract has been executed. Thank you to Mr. Shea for, for dealing with that in between meetings. We are scheduled to have a closing next week on Fayette Hall, so we're very glad to be wrapping that process up. Alda was working diligently on that as we speak. Few calendar items, we are looking to have another volunteer recognition breakfast, as we have done in the past. We're hoping to do that the second Friday in November down at the Senior Center, but we'll be nailing down those details hopefully tomorrow, and then we'll start publicizing that and sending out invitations. The selectmen's, next set of selectmen's office hours are October twenty-second, from five to seven PM here in this room. For folks that have not had a chance to attend yet, we encourage them to do so. And just one more reminder that our ribbon cutting for the Public Safety Complex is the morning of Saturday, October twenty-sixth, starting at ten AM, so we really look forward to having a great community celebration that morning.
Good. Thank you. Again, I was gonna touch on office hours as well. Mr. Stivers and I did the office hours last week. We only had one attendee there, so hopefully folks can take that opportunity to, you know, take some time to come meet with us, have discussions outside of this forum. Again, our next meeting will be, our next office hours will be next Tuesday, five to seven. It'll then be one in November and one in December. And we just did one each of those months due to holiday conflicts in the, for the latter part of each of those months.
I don't know, Mr. Shea, when Ms. Brascio and I did office hours, we had, what, twenty, twenty-five people come in, Lisa? I don't know.
We're busy, I don't know.
Well, we know, we know who's liked in this town and who's disliked in this town.
I had one on the first one that Lisa and I did, so I'm doing better. Zero, actually, we had.
I'll make a motion, then, that Ms. Brascio and Mr. Healy do all the office hours from there on out. We're also targeting November, one of our meetings in November, for a joint meeting with the library trustees to fill that vacancy. A couple of folks have reached out and expressed interest in that open position. The library trustees have asked those individuals to sit in on a meeting, and my understanding is that one individual sat in on a meeting in September. There's two others who have shown potential interest that they've invited to sit in on the October meeting. Will then be in a position after that to hold a joint meeting with the library trustees to get that vacancy filled. And just wanted to end with thanks to everybody in the, in the community. I think it was a great Heritage Day weekend. Unfortunately, was not able to attend the Heritage Day festivities yesterday. I understand it was very widely attended and was very, very successful. But was also, but what also was successful was the number of golfers that we had come out this weekend as well. I was out, Saturday, Saturday was a little slow with, with weather. My discussions that I had with Bill Harrison from New England Golf Sunday and yesterday were very, very busy, certainly in comparison to what they would have expected for October, so I think a lot of people came out and took advantage of that. I'd like to thank the board for supporting, moving forward with that effort to, to encourage folks to come out this weekend to play at the course. I really want to thank everybody at New England Golf for stepping up and being so supportive, very friendly and welcoming to everybody who did come in. Also want to thank folks from ALS One who stepped up and helped us out a lot. But again, it's, it's the people from the community, not only from our town, but from other towns as well, that I know that came out to, to play the course at a reduced rate and make a contribution at, at the same time as well. Played Saturday with my, my wife and one of my daughters. Actually met a group on Saturday that used to play with John Wilson, and they invited me to play Sunday morning. So while playing with them, I also ran into members from Brian Schiffern's family as well. So a lot of folks came out, took advantage of it. Of course, on Sunday, when I was there, was busy all day long, so happy to, happy that happened. And initial indications are, we raised roughly twenty-five hundred dollars to go towards ALS One from, from those two days. So thanks to everybody. That's all I have.
I have two very quick observations. Number one is, is it was a terrific weekend on the golf course. I'm not a golfer, but I went over there on, on Saturday, and I encourage folks who haven't been over to the golf course yet to go over. I mean, it is, it is remarkable what great shape it's in already, and next year, I think, is going to be a terrific year. The second observation is, is I think it was great to have recreation and personnel, and I think the idea of having the various boards is a, is a very good one. It's, it's good for me to, to be able to hear what some of our boards, committees, departments are up to, and, and, and I, I, you know, encourage us to, to consider doing that going forward. And here's some of the terrific stuff that's going on in town.
Ms. Brascio?
I would just like to offer best wishes for Rick Medeioli, retired after forty-plus years with the fire, police department, sorry. And I'd like to wish him well and thank him and his family's continued service over the years to the town of Southbro. We're a much better place, and the department's in a much better place, based on the service that he's done. So best wishes on his retirement. Thank you.
Others?
No, great comment about Rick. Classy guy, and, you know, he gave a lot to the town.
Yep, a couple of things. First, I'd second Mr. Healy's comment about the value of having various boards come in at selectmen's meetings and provide updates. I'm interested in hearing from people like the Municipal Technology Committee, for example, and I know the ADA Committee slash Accessibility Committee has some ideas on the table that I think would be very helpful to, to discuss. Second, again, reinforce the comment I made earlier about Heritage Day. I think that, that Heritage Day and similar events are very... I think that, that Heritage Day and similar events are very important for the town. There's a lot of good work that happens there. People like the Rotary Club, for example, of supporting the Pumpkin Walk and, and the food truck events and so forth. And, and Youth and Family Services, Senior Center, Schools, others. All these events, I think, again, provide a strong sense of cohesiveness in the town that I think is very important to focus on, support and, and move on going forward. Which leads into the second comment I have, which is an update on the master plan process, which Lisa and I are the Selectmen representatives to that process. I think we're making good progress. We've defined 11 areas for focus that we're going to have the initial public input session on schedule for November 7th. At Trotiere, there'll be more publicity by that, around that. Anyone who is interested in opining on where the town should go over the next 10, 20 years was an opportunity to come in and hear what we've done and help us move forward in whatever direction makes sense there. I think a number of interesting opportunities there, trying to think big, big picture issues and lay the groundwork for where we're going to go over an extended time period here, which I think can help set policies in a lot of important areas. And finally, as I've listened to a number of the conversations we've had over the last weeks here, one of the things that keeps coming back to me is the element of technical expertise required for a number of these things. Tonight, talking about the Pine Hill Parmenter stuff. I mean, I've looked into that some and I've been somewhat surprised by the degree of technicality involved in something simple like a speed bump. Turns out that depending on the shape of the bump and how it interacts with car suspension systems, it determines the effectiveness of the bump. And there's a journal that's devoted to that kind of stuff, for example. And so I think having the expertise to do those kind of things. We've had issues around stormwater planning for places like the Main Street area and so forth. I think we are less well off now than previously when we had a town engineer. I think there's great value in having a town engineer. When I was on the zoning board, we had a town engineer who was extraordinarily helpful in the permitting process in terms of not only providing input to consider permitting applications, but to coordinate that process across the various permit, permitting boards where you've got a large project that's in front of zoning, concom, planning, et cetera. So I think that we do use consultants now and that's, that's useful input certainly, but having that capacity in-house, probably on a part-time basis initially, to provide some support for these kinds of questions that I think are going to have a real ability to do a better job with some of the decisions that we have. So I would urge us to think about that as part of the next budget process. Is there a way we can do that? And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. First thing I would just like to point out is we're not going to take action on Item C, the one-day beer and wine license application. That applicant has requested that we not take action on that item. I'm also going to request that we hold Item A. Are there any other items that folks would like to hold before we vote? So I will hold, so I will move that we approve the regular session minutes of October 1st, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's seconded. And the reason I held it separately, I had passed along two minor edits that I had to the last minute. So a request that we approve these with those edits that I had forwarded to everybody.
As edited, seconded.
As, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. So I will then move Items B, D, and E as printed on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They'll pass unanimously. Brings us to other matters properly before the board. Consideration of special municipal employee policy. This was, has been discussed, I believe this is our third meeting discussing this topic, at least third. There were discussion held, comments made on the proposed policy as presented at our last meeting. We've had updates to that and those updates have been distributed. Mr. Healy, you're the proud author of what was distributed. If you would like to just touch on that?
Sure. Just quick background on, on the, on the policy. Every city and town in Massachusetts has the ability to determine that, that various employees, appointed officials, elected officials can be deemed special municipal employees. Any town can do it, any city can do it. Most of them do in one form or another. Very few of them have policies. I think it's a good idea for a town to have a policy rather than to operate ad hoc. Some of the criticisms that I've heard have been contrary to actually having a policy, which means that we'd be just operating ad hoc. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Southborough has a number of special municipal employees already that has, have been designated over the years. And they've been, again, it's been done on a, on a, on a one-off rather than being able to look at a particular policy. And there's been no procedure in place for any sort of transparency or reporting mechanism. So the policy that's been drafted that rely, that's relied on policies that have been implemented in a number of other towns basically does a couple of things. It's, it's a neutral policy. It doesn't require that anybody get appointed a special or designated a special municipal employee. It is neutral. But if the, if the request has been made, and we'll get to presumably a second item, whether or not this policy is approved, Mr. McKay's request to be, for EDC members to be designated as special municipal employees. But the policy lays out a process for the Board of Selectmen, which is the, the, the body that's given the authority for the town of Southborough to consider designations for special municipal employees. It lays out the process for what, what items can be considered. It lays out a process for certain boards where there should be a presumption against them being special municipal employees because they have a particular set of powers that other towns have looked at, other cities have looked at. I think it makes an awful lot of sense to have those quasi-judicial policymaking boards not be considered special municipal employees. I think it was Mr. Stivers' last meeting suggested that rather than leave it completely general, that we specify some of the boards or committees that might fall into that category. And that, that's one of the things that was added. The additional thing is the, for the transparency element, element and the reporting aspect of it, Mr. Hagerty, as the town clerk, how that is going to be carried out, he volunteered his office to be the repository of, of forms that are generated if in fact someone who is a municipal employee confronts a situation where someone be appearing in front of a, a different board than their own. And so that process is laid out. And Mr. Hagerty also came up with a proposed form that I think is very good. I made some minor tweaks to it. So where we are today is I think it's either the third meeting, might be the fourth, where we've had the opportunity for consideration by our board. We've had the opportunity for public comment. We've received some, both on the, on the pro side and on the con side. And I think the only person we haven't heard from after the policy was drafted was Ms. Brascio, who wasn't able to be here last time. And I think one of the things we specifically put over to today to have view of the opportunity to weigh in on the draft. But other than that, I think it's, it's, it's ripe for being considered by the, the, the board tonight.
Ms. Brascio?
All right. Thank you. I, I want to touch base on the policy, but unfortunately because I did miss the last meetings, I didn't have an opportunity also to give some of my thoughts that I had. So I'd like to take that opportunity and do that now. That any time that we're lessening the enforcement of financial ethic law, we need to give due consideration. And I think that's what we're doing here. And I appreciate that. I'm appreciative for the board for holding further discussion until tonight. So I did have the opportunity to weigh in further. I did watch the last meeting and I appreciated the considerations given and shared. I'm of the strong belief that this designation should not be done by a blanket policy, nor should it be common practice as with other towns. I found there are towns such as Bridgewater that view the designation as not common. Northfield is being granted only in limited circumstances, to name a couple. The most important piece of research I found as I was going through all this was the town of Hamilton has a fabulous PowerPoint presentation that kind of summed up some of my thoughts. So I'd like to just take a second and, and touch on, on a couple of these. That they talk a lot about transparency in government and that the open meeting law, the public records law, and the conflict of interest law combine to require openness and integrity in public service. Public officials represent the public who have a right to know what their officials do and how they do it, with only a few relative exceptions provided by the law. If you can imagine every action public officials take to rest on a three-legged stool where each leg represents one of the three laws discussed, then if one leg fails, then all will fail. So these are just some of the things that, that I had considered in going through this. And one of the points they also made was that the three laws together just establish minimum standards of conduct. It doesn't set the bar. It could obviously be set higher, but it is at a minimum. I think that there should be some form of guidelines, that members should be able to agree with some of the statements that are required by law. That you must not have participated in a matter as part of your municipal position. The matter must not be, or within the past year have been under your official responsibilities. And some of those were, were important points for me. And I think that the policy presented, I'll move on to that. I can support as, with a couple of changes as a great base. And I think, again, the standard should be very high for consideration for all those that do come forward with the policy. I appreciate all of the research that Mr. Healy put in in drafting this and the time and energy that you took and all of the documentations you provided the board and the public. Well, I can appreciate some towns feel a broader and umbrella policy is best for them. We've clearly seen over time that just because another community takes a position, whether it be a town meeting schedule, a policy or procedure or whatever, that Southborough doesn't always follow suit, that it may be what's best for us. For reference, I just wanted to add that the Board of Selectmen lost the special municipal employee status at 10,000 people once our son just hit that, with the belief that the greater the population, that more people should be able to step forward and serve that don't have conflicts. So holding a board committee or commission to a lesser standard is concerning to me as the state governs that we ourselves, as your elected officials, cannot sit. I think that the tougher conversation, not so much with this policy, but the tougher conversation starts when the boards, committees, and commissions step forward with their request. Again, this is a great starting point. As I said, I think we should hold their requests to a higher standard. But I do have a couple of recommendations for the policy and I do support the policy with a couple minor changes, if the board's in agreement. On number five, if pursuant to a written request, the person border committee, it should be coming from just border committee. I don't agree a person because this designation is for a complete border committee.
The only reason that's in there is because, for instance, a town, town council, right now, town council in Southborough is a special municipal employee.
Okay.
So the reason I put person in there wasn't so that a, an individual would be coming forward asking for designation, unless they're an individual who holds the post.
Okay.
Special, you know, a, a town council, if someone were special town council, if someone were, who else do we have?
A wiring inspector, plumbing inspector.
Maybe specify that, that if you're on a border committee, the request should come from the border committee as the designation encompasses everyone. So if there's a way
There's always, there's always a way.
That would be great.
Might do it, border committee or person, should the person be the only holder of that office or something like that?
Okay. That's easily done.
Okay. And then under number 10, where we talked about within seven days of each relevant matter or instance on a form that provided to the clerk, I would like to add some form of language that not following the process listed above will result in automatic loss of classification.
Sure.
I just, again, I think we need to, go ahead.
I would always suggest changing that to May. I mean, I think it should be discussed.
Well, of course.
People are volunteers. The mistakes can happen. But to have it a definitive will, I would just say May because we are the ones who are going to do it and it's going to come in front of us for board.
That's fine. I just want it to be a discussion point that, you know, people know that you shouldn't avoid these steps. Because I think all these five steps that you put in here, A through E, are very important. And I think they were basically doing what I just said, but not taking it that one step further. So I would be certainly willing to even bring it forward for a discussion of the board to some level.
And I, and I think just following Mr. Kalenda's comment, the reason it should be May is because there is no question that right now in the town of Southborough and in cities and towns everywhere, this is a very difficult statute. It's not a well-written statute. I don't care what anybody says. And as a result, it's a, it can be a trap for people. And in, right now, it's a trap for people and they, they are potentially violating the law. So it, it still is a trap if they don't know that, that in fact, there is a, there's a board somewhere that someone is appearing in front of that might create a, a, an intersection of the provisions. So I think just adding May in there makes an awful lot of sense.
Okay. And I, I found it very helpful to, when you, to add these points, that so it's not just you give a designation, but if somebody finds they need to use that designation, that it's, it's put there so the public knows, so there's, there's no question down the line that, you know, and not that I think anybody's ever going to have an intent to do anything inappropriate. I don't think that's the case, but accidents happen, things happen. And I think this, this was a very good provision to put in here.
Okay.
That, you know, the public can have access to that at any time.
Is there any disagreement with any of those two, two things that Ms. Brascio has talked about?
None at all. I had one more question.
Mr. Stivers?
Related, Murray, last time you commented, I think it was on the preamble, you thought it might make sense to have a preamble. I'd commented the Abington preamble seemed to me to be very useful. And I don't see that here. Is there?
I'm fine to do a preamble. I'd like to get the policy first and then, and then go from there.
Yeah, I'm fine with the policy, but I think it's helpful to have a preamble to reinforce this as well for folks to lead into it.
Fair enough. Mr. Kalenda?
So, right. I, I, I want to see a policy put, you know, preamble. You know, to me, the ones that have been offered would, would require significant redlining and discussion from my perspective, if we're going to even do one. I'm not in favor of one, but if we're going to do one, that could take an additional number of months to try to agree to a preamble.
You know, just one point that I'm, I'm, I'm in support of the policy as, as amended. And, you know, touching on one comment about, you know, the population, you know, just over 10,000 and there ought to be enough people in town. I think in a lot of ways, a lot of the committees that we have put together, we have targeted certain skill sets because the town benefits from, you know, the various skill sets that people do have. And I think by targeting those skill sets, we're increasing the likelihood that there may be a conflict with the, where we may need to have these people as special municipal employees. And again, using myself as the example that I brought up the last time. You know, if I were the type of engineer that also represented people in front of, you know, Conservation Commission or Board of Health or something else of the sort, you know, I could also, you know, provide benefit to another committee to provide that engineering background. And, you know, while there may be out of a group of 10,000 other citizens, I think that there are skill sets that people in town have that we certainly target for, for various committees that I think it makes sense to have this policy in place just to ensure that we don't have run afoul of, of the law.
I mean, look at the Public Safety Complex, you know, that group's unbelievable.
Again, to have an architect on that committee, lawyers and on that committee, that was.
I do have a few comments on the document. So I know in, in 10, I think you've added "or their employer" everywhere.
Yes.
How is, how is the employee always going to know whether or not their employer has done, is, is involved in any of that? And that's an incredible onus on the employee to, to have that. I think that should, those three words in each section should be deleted.
Well, doesn't?
If you were to ask me, I mean, I, I would have no idea what, you know, I, you know, my employer has 20-plus thousand people and worldwide. I mean, I know we're talking about Southborough, but how are you going to, how are you, how is the employee always, always going to know?
Isn't that how the original law for municipal employees is written?
I thought that was the spirit of the law, yeah.
See, that's, 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 that.
Tell me how, though. I want to know how it works in practice.
You've just highlighted one of the reasons that, that I think Southborough needs this policy. Because right now, if you're not a, a special municipal employee and your employer appears before another board in Southborough, you are potentially violating the statute.
But how, again, how's the employee going to know?
And you don't know it. And you don't know it. That's the problem with this provision.
People need to understand that, though.
Isn't?
And, and what this does is it requires, it, it, it gives someone the protection of, that they're not violating. of, that they're not violating the law, but it puts an onus on them of disclosure.
So, right, so if they know, you know, then they need to personally disclose. If they don't, do those three words negatively affect that person, or are you saying that that is a help to them?
Personally, I think that's addressed by the language that Ms. Brascio had added, where, you know, that, you know, if it is discovered that this does happen, then that person may, or that the group may have a special municipal employee revoked. That could be an opportunity to, where the person could come in and say, hey, I had absolutely no idea that this was going on.
Right.
From here on out, you know, here are all the forms that I should have filled out, that I need to fill out moving forward.
And we can apply the practical sense to that, through that review process.
I think as a practical, as a, as a practical matter, and is Mr. McKay still here? I mean, it really is, when you're talking about a law firm, I think it really sort of crystallizes it, because, for instance, and I have no idea what Mr. McKay's practice is like, but he is on the EDC, and has, you know, various items that come before the EDC, and they, they consider and they, they vote on. And he has various conflict of interest laws that apply to him in his role on the EDC. Someone who works at his law firm might represent someone who appears in front of the zoning Board of Appeals, which he has no involvement with.
Or knowledge of, right.
But, but, and I guess that, that becomes the point, I mean, it, it does put an onus on, on, on folks to be vigilant about knowing that, I mean, I don't know how big your firm is, but it's, but it's not, you know, 1,200 lawyers. Presumably, if someone is appearing before the town of Southborough, you would have the ability to know that, or am I wrong?
That's a fair, it depends on your firm, but I would say, generally speaking, that's a pretty large assumption. Now, most law firms have a fairly sophisticated conflicts review process before any matter is taken on, but that's a process that's done by human beings, and you will, I tend to know and to find out about things that are happening in Southborough, because I've been in town for a little while, I'm a partner in the firm, and so I'm talking to my other partners, and so a lot of times, I'm not finding out about this stuff necessarily through a formal review process, but rather because I keep my ear close to the ground, to generally have a sense of, of what's going on. But I think that varies significantly among firms, depends on the size of your firm. I mean, as an example, you know, my firm, we're a Town Council in eight different towns. We represent three dozen other towns as either Labor Council or School Council, and we represent a number of other communities as special council for one matter or another. So there's a lot going on. And in my firm, we probably do significantly more on the municipal side than we do on the developer's side, but it's, it's, you know, you're not always gonna know. And my, my sort of, I guess, comment overall with regard to the policy is, I think it's tremendously well-intended, and, and I think special, municipal employees, special or not, need to be paying attention to, to these things, they're, they're really important. Conflicts of interest are important, and the appearance of conflicts of interest are important. But I, I think, I think it would be naive to think that particularly paragraphs 10 and 11 aren't gonna have a chilling effect on volunteers wanting to come forward, and for a variety of reasons. One of which is, you have to be aware of this policy. I mean, we're sort of aware of it right now, right, because we're talking about it, and the board's thinking about adopting a policy. But 10, 15 years from now, when none of the people who are in this room tonight are in this room 10 or 15 years from now, when somebody is applying this policy, how are you gonna know that the policy exists? I mean, I'll give you a recent example of something that was really important in this town.
Could you explain what's in the policy?
There is an annual review that the board...
Well, I'm coming to that, too, but, but just the existence of the policy itself. Two years ago, when the EDC started talking about the Downtown Initiative, we went back to the firms, or to the town's website, and we tried to find the last version of the ZAC proposal. You can't find it anywhere on the town's website. Pretty important document that people put in hundreds and hundreds of hours of time on, and you couldn't find it anywhere. And so I could very easily see, many years from now, this policy sort of getting lost in the shuffle and being hard to identify for a volunteer on a town board or committee who isn't as sensitive to this stuff as I am, because I see it from time to time and day to day in my practice. If you require a, you know, the filing of a disclosure form, beyond, I have no problem with filing disclosure forms, but there's already one that's required under state law under Chapter 268A. I don't think that you need to set up another municipal form and another municipal requirement beyond what 268A requires, because 268A, Section 23B3, already requires that if it's something that could give the appearance of a conflict of interest, you should file a disclosure on it. I've done one of them, because I thought one of those issues came up. But now, if something like that came up again, I'd be required to file two forms on the same thing. It's already hard enough, I would submit, to get people to know that they gotta submit the state form, let alone submit a state form and, and another municipal form. And again, that's not to suggest that you shouldn't be disclosing these things, because I think you should be disclosing things. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I think there's already a vehicle and a process set up to do that, and these forms are, I filed mine with the town clerk, and I think that's where they go in every community. The other thing that I would caution you against is, I'm not sure what Paragraph 11 really means. In one sense, having the selectmen revisit the policy and the designations year to year, I don't think is necessarily a bad idea, but I wouldn't want to leave a, an employee who gets that designation with the impression that, that they gotta sing for their supper every year. I mean, folks have a lot of obligations, they have a lot of things going on. I wouldn't want to be, I mean, I've, I've been here three or four nights already, just on, on this one request. I wouldn't want to have to go through that process every year, and if I did have to go through that process, it might make me second guess as to whether or not I would want to serve on a town board or a committee. And to the point of emphasizing the importance of these disclosure issues, I, I think it's also important to point out that folks have a lot of stuff going on in their lives, they have a lot of requirements that they have to fulfill, and I think we want to encourage people to participate in the town process, and not give them an excuse to not participate, because we've made the process so onerous. There's already a form that you file for, for these kinds of issues, and I just don't know how much is served by making folks file another form on, on the, the same issue. And particularly, you know, file another form within seven days' notice with the threat that you might lose your designation. These are really, and, and folks think that, you know, it's, it's no big deal. I will tell you, the process, this has not been a pleasant process to go through, from some of the letters that I've seen, some of the public comments that I've heard, and some of the things that I've seen written about me, and my profession, and my firm, and the work that we do. And to think that that stuff does not have an impact on people personally and professionally, I think is, is just not accurate. It really affects folks, and there are plenty, and a lot of, of safeguards already in place, but I don't think it really serves us, and it serves our town, to make that process any more onerous than it already is. Again, not to suggest that you shouldn't have a policy, and you shouldn't make SME designations with careful consideration and, and, and due course, but let's not do anything that I think chills people from participating in town government. I have other things to say about my request in particular, but, but I wanted to kind of focus on the policy for a minute.
Can I respond, just, just quickly to that? So, I've served the town a long time myself, most of us sitting up here on the board, there are many that are on this board that have served longer than I have. One of the things that you say that concerns me the most is, is if we have volunteers serving at this time that could potentially have a conflict or be violating the law, that's concerning to me, because we have failed then, as the selectmen of this town, and have not trained our volunteers to know that there are things you can and you cannot do. Everybody takes an ethics test every year. That's required by law for all of us to do in order to serve. So, for me, it's, it's not about, what we're asking to do through the special municipal employee is to lessen the ethics laws that are already in place. And I understand that it may deter some people, I think most people that serve want to do the right thing, and I think people are honest in how they want to do the right thing. And I just think this policy in itself, in, in lessening any of the strict require, well, the minimal requirements, as, as, as we read for the, for the three policies, the open meeting law, the public records, and the conflict of interest, I, I think we're lessening that, and we're allowing things that we may not have allowed prior, because it may be a wrongdoing. And that's my concern, is if we have people that currently may not know, and it may make them wonder, well, gee, you know, if I have to do this, well, they should be doing it now, by law. There's a conflict of interest law in place now, they're supposed to be abiding by the rules, we all have. And, and if we, again, I'll just repeat, if we, again, have failed our volunteers, and not letting them know what by law they should or they shouldn't be doing, and not giving a status that I think should be held to a high regard, and it's, it's not a criticism of anybody, but it's just, before we allow the lessening of a status, if we do not know that our volunteers know what the law is, Dave, I'm concerned about that. I'm, I'm very concerned about that. And if that's gonna deter people from serving, then maybe we have a bigger issue on our hands, if we have people serving that don't know what the law is. And they may already have a conflict and have an issue, then we need, as a board, as a town, we need to better serve our volunteers than to set them up for possible failure.
I, I can't speak for all the other volunteers, but as Selectman Healy pointed out, 268A is not the most accessible of statutes in terms of understanding what it's supposed to mean in every circumstance, and so it would not surprise me if there are people that are unwittingly in violation of the statute for one reason or another.
Agreed.
And I, I don't know whose failing that is, and I don't know if it's really all that productive to assign blame to it, but I think it, I think it's just sort of a, it's, it's an unfortunate reality that probably exists in Southborough and in, in a lot of other communities.
Okay, Dave, let me, let me, let me, let me jump in.
Sure.
Because I think, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overcomplicate this, because the two things you raised, number one had to do with Paragraph 11, which is, which doesn't put, put any onus on a, basically Paragraph 11 says that, that annually, the Board of Selectmen shall look at the list of, of special municipal employee designations, and determine whether or not to keep them. Doesn't put, the, that, Paragraph 11 doesn't put an onus on anybody, and it certainly wasn't my intent in writing it, and it's not my, it's not the intent I see reading it, that it puts an additional obligation on somebody who's already been designated a special municipal employee. And one of the reasons that's in there is because, one of the things we realized when you sent in your letter, is that Southborough has a bunch of special municipal employees floating around that the town really didn't know about. And some of them make sense, some of them don't. And so this puts the obligation on the Board of Selectmen to annually look and make sure that we got it right. So that's number one. No additional obligation on, on anybody who's been appointed or otherwise. Paragraph 10...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So if you have the designation, and you want to keep the designation, I sort of take from Paragraph 11 that you kind of need to keep your eye out on the selectmen's agenda, and make sure that when that item comes up after July 15th, that you're at least kind of paying attention to what's going on. So, and again, I have no problem with the annual review process generally, but I think there should be some mechanism in there, that if the board is considering changing the designation for an existing SME, that, that that person, you know, has an oper, you know, that, that is somehow brought to their attention, just so that they know.
It's earlier in the policy. In order to revoke, you have to put it on an agenda.
No.
You would be rescinding a designation.
And to rescind...
I, I get that, but there's nothing in the policy that says if you're gonna revoke somebody's designation, you're necessarily gonna tell them. And I think the revocation is something different than what, what Number 11 is. I guess I just didn't read into 11 that there was any sort of, necessarily gonna be any notice to an SME who wants to make sure that he or she preserves that status.
I think point one deals with that, to me, very clearly.
Yeah, Paragraph 9 says, "Proposals to rescind the classification of a special municipal employee shall be made part of an agenda of a regularly scheduled meeting of the board, and rescinding any such classification shall be by a majority of the board." So 11 says we'll review it, and 9 is the mechanism for, if we determine that we're gonna rescind it.
Does it make sense to add to 9 that notification shall be provided?
Yeah.
That's all I'm suggesting.
Okay.
That's all I'm suggesting.
Notification provided to, so it's not done without their knowledge.
And then, in terms of the, the, the notice provisions in 10, right now, under, under Massachusetts state law, unless you're a special municipal employee, you can't do any of those things that are listed in Number 10. So you don't have a disclosure obligation. You can't do them. So there's not a form that covers these.
Boy, I think you'd be playing it pretty fast and loose.
No, because, Dave, it's not a conflict of interest. That's, that's the problem with the statute. If you have a conflict of interest, you are obligated to provide notice. This is not a con, Sections 17 and Sections 20 are not conflict of interest provisions.
For SMEs.
They are status provisions.
I, I, I understand that. What I was about to say, though, was that I think you'd be playing it pretty fast and loose, if you were an SME, and one of these issues came up, and you didn't disclose it on the state-required disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form.
Then there's no additional disclosure. You're just required to do it to the town.
No, but you're required to do the state form to the town anyway.
The, the, these items in Paragraph 10, you are not required to disclose those under state law. You're not.
You can't do them.
Just can't do them.
Yeah, 'cause you can't do them.
Yep.
But you could, if you're an SME, and what I'm saying is, if you're an SME...
That's my point. And, and, and if you, if you then do them, you have to disclose them, but not on a state form. The state doesn't require it.
Yep.
The town does.
Like I said...
You're making my point here.
No, no, I'm saying...
Yes, you are.
No, I'm saying, if you're an SME, and you have one of these issues come up under Section 17 or Section 20, I think you'd be playing it very fast and loose to not disclose it on the state form. I, I, I...
It's not required.
The, the state requires you to, to file a, a, a disclosure, not only for actual conflicts, but for any appearance of conflict. So I would suggest that any of those issues...
For any action that you will take. That's the, again, the reason these provisions are in there is because there's not a disclosure requirement now, because the, Sections 17 and Section 20 are not, do not address actions by anyone. They address status. If you are on a, a border committee, you don't, you, you're not required to take any action that might be a conflict, that might be an appearance, that might be otherwise to violate Section 17 or Section 20. All you have to do is stand in front of another board and say, could I get a liquor license for a, for my nonprofit? You violated the law. Doesn't have anything to do with a conflict. That's, that is why I think it's important to have special municipal employee designations, so you avoid that trap, but if you get the special municipal employee designation, it seems a pretty small price to pay...
To report, yeah.
To report it to the town.
Yeah.
And my point is, you're required to report that under Section 23.
You're not. Trust me.
So...
But if you are, you're just reporting it in two places instead of one.
Tell it to the judge, Dave.
I mean, you can report it in two places at once, I think that's unnecessary, but this wouldn't be the first time two lawyers disagree on a point of law.
All right, I'm gonna go to Mr. Litt.
Well, I, I also wanted to get Mr. McKay's thoughts on those three words, or their employer, I'd put you on the spot, but, you know, I don't know if you saw that.
I did, and that, I mean, I think you should get rid of Section 10, or, excuse me, 11, altogether, but, because I think Section 23 of 268A already covers that disclosure. I don't think you need a separate disclosure that you have in, in, in Paragraph 10. But adding in the employer piece of it, I mean... But adding in the employer piece of it, I mean, I think that's probably okay if you work in a place that's got five or six employees or something like that, but if you work in a big place, um, I have 120 employees at my firm. If you work in a company that has, you know, 1,000 employees, I think that's a pretty big burden to put on somebody to know, um, that, you know, of every matter that might possibly involve the town of Southborough. You know, it, it, it may seem like a small thing, but I think to, to put that onus on, on a special municipal employee, on a volunteer, you know, is, is pretty important. And that, that raises one other issue that I think is really important. Because I, I've heard the point made that, um, you know, you're lessening the conflicts of interest laws and, and committee members should be subject to the same exact rules as, um, of, you know, basically treating all boards and committees the same. But all boards and committees aren't the same. The, the Economic Development Committee, as an example, has none of the powers that the Board of Selectmen have. We don't make policy. We, 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 we take votes, but we can't actually, I mean, we can't, we can't do anything. We can't grant a permit. We can't bind the town to anything without someone else's approval. And so to put those kinds of fully volunteer committees on the same plane as a Board of Selectmen, um, I just think is, is, the, the substance of the two bodies in a municipality are totally different. The same is true with respect to a planning board or a conservation commission, um, or a zoning board of appeals. The Economic Development Committee and a lot of other committees, take your, uh, you know, the, the, um, uh, the Public Safety Committee. No authority to, um, grant any permits or anything of that nature. EDC is the same way. Um, and so to suggest that they're in the same position, um, as a committee that does have that authority, I think just doesn't recognize that there are differences between the boards and committees. And that's exactly why this status was, was created, to not necessarily say that everybody has to do it the same way, but to recognize that not every board and committee is necessarily the same. A Board of Selectmen in a town of 9,500 people may not be exactly the same as a Board of Selectmen in a town of 10,250 people. But they are treated differently because one is a smaller community and one is a larger community. So I think that's an important aspect of this as well, that, um, you know, I think it's appropriate that you have a policy and that you address that. I also think it's appropriate that you have sort of called out that distinction. But that distinction also plays into the SME status question that, that I assume you'll take up later, which is every board and committee is not exactly the same in their powers and their authorities.
All right.
Just quickly.
Then I'm going to go to Mr. Litt, and then I'm going to.
I, I, I agree with that, Dave, and that's why I support this policy, because one of the things it does is it's on a case-by-case basis. Even though there's a policy, a general policy to start, whoever wants to come in and ask for this designation has to do a presentation and has to give a reason why. And it gives the board the opportunity to ask the questions that, that I agree. There are certain designations that, or certain groups that have that designation now that you would say, and I'll use council on aging as a, as a for instance, because they have it. You know, it was given to them because a lot of the, um, tax write-off workers serve potentially on the council on aging. So there's a potential conflict there. But that's why I think this is important, is to have the discussion, for EDC to come in and say, this is why we need it, and the board to hear what the potential conflicts may or may not be, to deem if it's important enough to, to offer this designation. So that's.
I agree. All right. Mr. Litt?
Tim Litt, 148 Woodland Road. I just wanted to add a couple of things to the, to this discussion, and I promise I will not go on for as long as some of the notes I've written or the previous discussion. First off, from the point of view of, of an engineer, I worked in companies that had 130,000 employees, 50,000 employees. I can assure you that while I might have known a good subset of the senior engineers, I did not know what the sales guy even five miles away was doing or what relationship he, he or she might have had, um, with a board or a committee somewhere. So while I, I certainly think that where you can get transparency, you want to do it, I agree with Mr. Kalenda's observation that it's very difficult to put the onus on the individual to know what a whole lot of other people are doing. And this is, you know, the case with large things. I understand that, you know, if you have a small consulting firm, it's a lot easier to comply. The other thing I want to remind you of is that a lot of this conversation has talked about, um, people holding this designation, doing this or doing that. And I want to remind you that it's the position that gets the designation, not the person. So, um, when you say the designation may be revoked if a form isn't submitted, that's group punishment. That's saying you have a, you have a committee of five people, one of them screws up once, and the other four and all future holders of this now, um, lose the designation. So I think it's important, as you structure these, to remember that we're talking about positions and what we think the position may do, especially through this third party, not the person, you know, who's, who's taking the action, not focus on, you know, the person who's coming forward, such as Mr. McKay.
Thank you. So we have, um, the policy before us.
I also have one other comment on the, on the, um, the form. If we are going to do an additional form, why are we asking for people's compensation they may have received? And why should that be a matter of, for anyone to know?
Because it'd be compensation from the town.
Which is public.
From the town?
Town, yeah.
All right, I read it. I didn't read it that way. Let me just go back to it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Hang on, we're.
So it says, list the compensation or other benefit you will receive through this activity during this calendar year.
Through this activity.
Right.
To me makes it.
The activity is acting as an agent for someone before the town or having a contract with the town?
I would rather, I would like to see then from the town added.
Benefit you will receive from this town?
Yes.
From the town through this activity?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not sold on having to keep 10. I think 11, as stated, is, is our review. Um, and I think that's appropriate. We do that with every other board and committee on an annual basis, and they don't all show up and, and come, but if something's potentially going to be rescinded, we're going to notify them. So I, I, I think we can keep 11. I'm not sold on 10.
Well, I think 10 is sort of the heart of it, isn't it?
I personally am in favor of retaining 10.
Me too.
Yeah.
10.
I wrote it, I like it.
No pride of authorship here.
Well, then if we're, are we deleting or their employer?
I think that's the spirit of it.
You know what? I, with the recommended edit that Ms. Brascio had to paragraph 10, I'm in favor of retaining or their employer.
Yep.
And here's, here's why, if, for me, anyway, because, um, um, number one, I, I, I don't think the situation is going to arise very much where someone, where this policy is going to be implicated. That's the other odd thing about section 17 and section 20. They really don't come up very often, unless you're going out of your way to, to appear before the town where you, where you serve on a board or committee or you're having somebody appear. Um, um, but I am, I am, I have, I assumed when I was writing this that somebody, whether they were on the EDC or otherwise, probably would have the good judgment not to be representing someone before the zoning board of appeals or the conservation committee while they were, while they, while they were sitting on another board or commission in the town of Southborough. And if I were on the Board of Selectmen and someone was routinely doing that, they wouldn't be a special municipal employee very long.
So shouldn't this then say, or to their knowledge, their employer?
That's fine. See, I, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to get, when I wrote this policy, what I was trying to get to is the situation when, when someone wants to serve the town.
Yep.
Um, they're avoiding conflicts of interest, but they work for a large organization or a large law firm, and there are other people they work with who, in pursuing their livelihood, might appear in front of our zoning board of appeals or a conservation commission, and that shouldn't create a violation of the law for them.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at with this policy.
Then if, if, if the other members would agree to add those two words, or comma, to their knowledge, their employer, those three words.
All right.
That's fine.
So, so just so I'm aware of all the potential changes that we have. I know. Come through here. So, so I think that we are good on, correct me if I'm wrong, all the paragraphs up to paragraph nine.
Weren't we going to make an adjustment on five?
You had a.
Marty was going to use his legal lease and on five.
Oh, that's, that's right, that's right.
Yep.
Right. Correct. So modifications to, to clarify the person in paragraph five.
Yep.
Paragraph nine requiring notification. Yep.
Yep.
Um, paragraph 10, Ms. Brascio, the, um, sentence that you had at the end before sub-paragraph A, correct, regarding?
We changed it a little bit. I had not following this process listed above a result in automatic loss of classification. We changed that from automatic to.
May.
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 Yes.
Well, if, if, and I, I, I'm, I'm happy to put that in that, in there, but if, if it's, if it's going to be May, that already exists.
Okay.
In other words, we, the Board of Selectmen already, already has the authority.
We can rescind.
To rescind.
We do, but if she wants that language and is not going to vote for it otherwise without their additional language.
I understand, I'm just wondering if, if, if she, if she absolutely requires that language in there. I'm happy to put it in.
Um.
That makes it a little clearer.
That's what I thought.
Okay, perfect, I'll, I'll put it in.
I would prefer that it is, but.
Okay.
I'm not going to hold up a vote if, if the board is not.
I'm, I'm.
Wanting to heaven, so.
So add that. Okay. And then continually, um, in par, paragraph 10, those sub-paragraphs, or their employer, or to their knowledge.
Comma, to their knowledge.
Or, or not to their knowledge.
Or to their knowledge.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's for each of the sub, subsections?
Yes.
Okay. And my notes are correct? Those are.
That's all I had.
The changes.
And then that small edit to, uh, the form.
Yes.
And the change to the form.
Yep.
Yep. And I'm, before I call a motion, is the board ready to take action?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right.
Mr. Chairman, will you allow a little bit of?
Uh, I'm going to give you one minute, okay? We've talked about this for a while. You've, you've had an opportunity as well.
Thank you. Uh, to the best of their knowledge would be, or to make some attempt would be, would be good. This is business, not personal. Um, we're talking about safeguards to the public. We're talking about preventing impressions of inside track or actual creation of inside track. I don't, I don't understand the difference myself, and I've been talking to legal experts on this. So I don't understand how you can go ahead and pass this and not be creating conditions for inside track. But again, business, not personal relating to this policy. The point is to stop and prevent abuses and not create conditions where there's going to be less transparency. So you didn't have a discussion of downsides. Potential downsides are if you go ahead and bestow this special status on members of any committee, more lenient rules do apply to them. They will be able to receive compensation from someone other than the town with relation to a town matter. They'll be able to act as agent or attorney for someone other than the town in relation to the town matter. They will be permitted to have a financial interest in a contract with any town department except their own committee. There's no requirement, no requirement that the public receive notice of the contract. There's no requirement that the contract be put out for competitive bidding from a legal expert. So there's your downsides. You go, go ahead, and I think this is premature. Um, I, as I said before, even attorneys don't understand the downsides, but to rush to a vote on this without it really being fully considered and safeguards to the public, I think is premature. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move that we, oh, if I may. I would move that we adopt the, um, policy for special municipal employees as edited tonight.
I will second that. Motion is moved, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, brings us to the next item, the request for SME status for the Economic Development Committee members. Mr. Kalenda?
I will move that we vote to approve the request for SME status for EDC members.
I will second for discussion. Any discussion? Ms. Brascio?
Yes. Um, so now we've kind of got a conundrum. We've made a policy tonight that the request has to come from the board or committee, and the request that we had came from Mr. McKay. I don't know if EDC, I'm sure they've, they've talked about this. I went back and looked at their minutes up until nine, uh, and eight, two. This was the first time it popped up on the agenda this year, um, but it got postponed. So I, I know on nine, 12, they had a discussion. Did we hear anything from EDC seeing is this designation, again, is for the whole committee? Have we heard anything from EDC? That's my first question. And my second question is, now if it's going to be for the full committee, I don't know if there's any other potential conflicts that may, other members that may now get this status may have without having a discussion with us. So those are two of my concerns that, that.
Mr. Kalenda?
And I don't know the answer to that, but I'll, I'll suggest that us granting them that status, if any one of them wants to come and say, I don't want it, they're more than welcome to, because they're more than welcome to come to a, to a meeting and ask that they not be one.
But they can't do that. It's a board, it's a position.
Well, I don't, I don't worry about them not wanting it.
I think it's.
I worry about that.
I thought it's by member.
No, it's not.
It's for the whole committee. It's for everybody, but we don't know.
The position, EDC member.
That was why the requirement was in here, for them to come in and do a presentation about, um, the benefits for the committee and how granting the classification will benefit the town. I understand from, from Mr. McKay as one member's standpoint, and I, you know, uh, agree with that, but we don't know, we haven't heard from the committee as a whole. They haven't requested the designation, nor do we know if there may be any other potential conflicts. Mr. McKay's been very open about the conflicts that he may see, but, um, I worry with, with passing the policy and now doing this, we're missing a step. So I'll leave that to the board.
I guess two things. Number one, I'll ask Mr. McKay, was this discussed with members of the EDC?
It was, and folks were aware. I copied the committee, the full committee on, uh, on the request when I made it back in July. So folks are aware of it. We've never taken a formal vote on it, um, but folks are aware of it, and there's been no opposition expressed to, to the request, and I think folks, you know, understand. They understand what the issues are in terms of why I brought the request forward, and candidly, my, my experience, you know, just in, this really goes to the very heart of why I think the EDC is an appropriate committee for this designation. It's because if, if you're, if you're setting up a, a committee whose purpose is to try and, um, really be a cheerleader for the town on, um, economic development issues um, really be a cheerleader for the town on, um, economic development issues and trying to do that in a way that's, you know, fitting with the town's, um, goals and desires, its, um, uh, its priorities, um, you're necessarily gonna want people who have some connections to the business community in order to do that. I mean, that's just sort of, that, that, that goes to, you know, the very function of the committee. It's pretty hard to find, um, folks who have any experience with, um, economic development issues, development issues, municipal issues, um, uh, real estate issues who, you know, don't, don't have any business contacts with anybody who's, um, you know, may do business with the town of Southborough at some point. Um, and again, this goes to why the EDC, I think in some ways, is different than these other communities. That's the sort of safeguard that's built in to having an EDC that works to try and, and promote responsible development in a, in a community, but is not charged with responsible or able to grant any permits on its own. So, so there's, there's that sort of built-in distinction in roles, um, for this, this kind of request. But we've got folks on the committee who are real estate brokers. We have folks who work for large real estate brokerage firms. Um, there's another attorney on the committee who also does real estate matters. Now, the stuff that she does is, is different than what I do, but she has a lot of leasing experience. Um, one of our committee members is the Economic Development Director in another community up in Belrica. Um, so we have been able to, to build, I think, an outstanding commu-, uh, committee of folks who have some real subject matter expertise that I think serves the town and, um, uh, and, and serves the committee, um, and I think is a good example of, you know, where this designation, which may not be appropriate in all circumstances, is, is appropriate in this circumstance. Um, so I'm sorry, I probably gave you a much longer-winded answer than you were looking for, but the, 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 the answer is yes, we've talked about it, but we haven't taken a formal vote. Um, folks on the committee are aware of it, and there hasn't been any opposition that, that's been expressed. Mr. Robbins is here. You can, you, you, you can take his word on it if you don't believe mine.
But we do also have the option, per the policy, to undertake this as a board initiative as well.
What do you mean?
So.
I, I, I agree, but I think that, that creates a conundrum for me, that if we didn't have a request to do it, I could view that as the board's initiative, but because we have a request on the table, I, I personally don't know if I could view that as the board's initiative. Um, and again, I'm one of five, so.
So, yeah.
Everybody else can feel differently.
No, I think you make a good point. I, I think the other issue for me, I guess, is that, um, I hear what Mr. McKay has to say. I've been to a number of the EDC meetings. I actually am interested in understanding how some of the other members feel about this. I've not heard anybody else on the committee express concern about what SME status might do for them necessarily. But I also sort of stepped back from it relative to what we just voted on to basically say that permitting boards, for example, shouldn't be SMEs. And I understand that, that EDC can't issue permits or spend money or, or require anybody to do anything. On the other hand, if, if you look at what EDC has been doing over the last months here, um, in terms of doing things like the grant that was just awarded for working on zoning for downtown, uh, working with the planning board and ZBA to get various permitting, uh, approved for, um, uh, the, uh, project on Newton Street and Main Street there. Um, there's a lot of stuff that, to me, overlaps into the permitting process substantially. I think creates the opportunity for people to look at that and say, gee, there could be something problematic going on there. So I think we need to be extremely cautious about this, and I guess I remain convinced that it's worth being, uh, uh, sort of extra cautious on this and, and not designating EDC as, as SMEs for the appearance issue here. And I realize there are other boards that, you know, there is a lot clearer that wouldn't be a problem, could be appropriate, and, and would help with the recruitment process for volunteers. But to me, this one is, is close enough to the line in terms of things we are concerned about to not be supportive regardless of if EDC comes back later with a specific request. And, you know, I'd be interested in listening, but, uh, right now at least, I'm not in favor of this.
So I, I think it's, I think we've, we've heard enough, I have anyway, that, um, and that the EDC, and I've been to plenty of those meetings as well, and I've seen the level of, uh, expertise that, that comes to the EDC. Clearly, they, as Mr. McKay stated, they, they are advisory. Um, they are doing great work on behalf of the town. I don't think anyone should or needs to be suspicious of what the EDC is doing. On the contrary, if people saw the, the amount of work that, that, that group of volunteers does regularly to try to help improve this town, including the condition of downtown, they would continue to applaud what the EDC is doing. Um, I haven't heard of any members not wanting the designation. I have no interest in polling every single member and, and, and asking them if they don't want the designation, and then finding one out of how many members they have who says, no, I don't know enough about it, maybe I don't want it, and then nobody else receives the designation. Um, I think if it's, uh, you know, from everything that I've heard, and there's nobody has come and said that they don't, um, you know, I'm ready to vote in favor of, uh, of the EDC receiving the designation.
And I wanna clarify too, that, that again, I'm a big supporter of the ED, what the EDC does. I think it's an important function. I think we ought to support it strongly. I just think that, again, there are issues here in terms of public confidence that we have heard, not, I'm not suggesting that I think there is a particular issue here necessarily, but I think we need to be cautious.
May I mention something? I, I think there's been, um, concern or a fear that this somehow opens the floodgates to conflict of interest issues. And I'd like to suggest to you that it doesn't, not only because of the disclosure forms, whether you gotta do that under state law or, or under, um, uh, under our town policy, but I think folks misunderstand how this designation works. You cannot be on both sides of a transaction, period. Doesn't matter if you have SME des, SME status or not. I cannot represent a client in front of a planning board on a matter that has come before the EDC. If it's an EDC-related matter, I am out of the box, period, full stop, end of story. So this sort of suggestion that there's this, you know, kind of bleeding concern that if you give this designation to people, you've got an EDC that's infected with, you know, outside interests and outside concerns, just, just doesn't exist. It's just not there. I've been on that committee for seven years. I chaired it for five years. Um, I've worked with many of you folks in the course of, of, of that work on the committee. I have never done anything on that committee that wasn't what I thought was in the best interest of the town of Southborough, not in the best interest of some client that my firm might have, not in the best interest of one of my buddies, not in the best interest of, you know, some guy I played softball with 10 years ago. It was always, I've always done what I thought was in the best interest of the town itself and of the goals articulated by the Economic Development Committee. And what I fear has happened too often is these sort of conflict issues have become a shill for folks who don't believe in the mission. If you don't believe in the mission of the EDC, then, um, it's easy to sort of raise conflict issues and say, oh, these people aren't doing X, Y, and Z because they think it's at the best interest of the town. They're doing X, Y, and Z because they, they're, they're actually promoting, you know, some other cause or, or some other interest. And that is just, is not the way that I operate, and it's not the way that we operate. And reading some of the comments that I have seen written, both in letters to this board and in comments on the blog, that, you know, that I somehow am, am, am trying to, you know, play both sides of the coin and make money at the town's expense, is just frankly kind of insulting. And, um, here I've done all of this playing strictly by the rules. When I had a disclosure that I thought needed to be made, I made the disclosure. And now that's being sort of used against me to suggest that I've got these, you know, lingering conflict questions. Um, when I thought that the status was, uh, appropriate and I should get it, and the firm asked me to get it, I applied for it. And to sort of sit here and take the shots, you know, there are other people who are thinking about volunteering for town boards and committees, and they, I, I, I can't help but think that this is gonna have a chilling effect. I know that there are people who are probably, there, I've been asked the question several times at work already. How did, you know, what's happened with your designation? Have you gotten it yet? You know, do you think you're gonna get it? Um, and people see this stuff. They see the, you know, it, it's just, being right isn't always necessarily enough. When people raise these kind of concerns and they're unfounded, and they were raised in writing to this board, people suggesting that, that the EDC, one of the comments was, there are probably past and current conflicts of interest that have already arisen based on EDC engagements with local businesses. No evidence to support that at all, just the, just the blanket accusation. And I just don't think it's right that volunteers were not elected, were just appointed volunteers who never get paid anything, have to sort of withstand this kind of unfair scrutiny. And, and you're the firewall on all this stuff. It, it, I think it's part of the selectman's job to not only protect against the conflict of interest, which I think you're more than doing, but to also protect the volunteers a bit and to, to stand up for us and give us a reason to wanna volunteer and wanna help this town without jeopardizing our professional status, our reputations, um, and our livelihood. And I just think that's really important. I would like to continue serving this town. Um, and I'd like to do it without the sort of shadow of conspiracy theories and people suggesting that I'm doing it for some ulterior motive. Um, we should be working together on these issues.
I, for one, don't share that opinion in any way, shape, or form with you or anybody on the EDC. So that's not coming from me.
And, and let me also just say, my, my, my reservation and my question wasn't anything personal towards you, Dave. It was, it's a process. We created a process, and everybody on this board knows I, I'm a stickler for process. And we created a process, and then in looking at the process, I just had a question on how this was done and how we could veer from the process without knowing what the board, where the, where the committee stands on it. It was not a slight to you in any way. It was never the intent of that. It was, it's a simple process. Question is, a request came in, we have to look at the request. Policy or not, I would've asked the same question. I would've asked, where does the commission, committee stand on this? Did they take a position? That's why I went back and looked at the minutes. I tried to find whether it was a discussion that I could justify and say, okay, we have this process. This took place. Okay, let's go. You know? For, for me, it, it's just a question of, and I'm sure the committee is gonna, if there was negative support towards it, I'm sure they would've came forward to us. I, I don't think there's any question of that. But it's also us being able to ask the question if anyone foresees a conflict they may have. That's all. And that's, that's a transparency issue. That's not, nothing negative reflected against any of you. And everyone appreciates the service you've given to the town, and it's, it's certainly not about that.
My reaction is that, is that, um, and again, I think this is the fourth meeting. There's, there is notice of the fact that, um, the Board of Selectmen was going to consider the request for SME status for Economic Development Committee members. We can do it one of two ways. We can do it pursuant to a, to a request. It's, um, we can do it on our own initiative, but it's been noticed as ripe for consideration. That's my view.
Yeah, and I, I real, I'll admit, I was not reacting so much to the questions from this board, which I appreciate and sympathize with, and if I was, if I were in your position, I would be asking similar questions. Um, I'll admit, it's, it's, to some degree, this is the slings and arrows that have been, been directed my way and at the way of the committee since, um, since this request was first made back in July.
And, and Sam, I'll, I'll just, in, in response to your thing that, that, that how people will view this, I really don't think that should be part of our, um, um, consideration. Our consideration should be, what does the law require? Is there potential, what, what does the law require as to conflict of interest? What does the law require as to, um, um, appearing before this or appearing, appearing before that? There are always gonna be people who look, and whether it's distrust or otherwise, all we can do is have a process and consider the, and, and consider the, the, the factors we lay out in our own policy. And we don't lay out in our policy that how we think someone's gonna look at it. I just think that, I don't think that's appropriate. Along the facts.
I understand the point, and I think though that there is an issue relative to working to, uh, reinforce public trust and confidence in the process. And I think being conservative, cautious about these things is helpful in that dimension. And I understand your point certainly, though, in terms of what the law requires here.
So with that, is there a motion?
I, I think it's been made and seconded.
Let's just make sure.
I had moved that we designate EDC members as SMEs.
Correct, and I believe that I seconded it for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Motion was made, seconded. It's been discussed. Is there any other board discussion on the matter? All those in favor of granting SME status for EDC members?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes three to two.
Two.
Public Safety Building Committee, process for naming of spaces. Excuse me.
Are you here for the public safety?
Oh. We received, um, correspondence earlier today from Mr. Malinowski. Uh, he just wanted to send us a brief summary of the background, so we had put the request into the Public Safety Building Committee to start the process for soliciting names, for naming of certain spaces within the Public Safety Building. Public Safety Building Committee met on October seventh, and at that meeting, uh, the group discussed the process and town naming policy and issued a public notice on October eighth. Uh, the intent was to meet on Tuesday, for that board to meet on Tuesday, November twelfth, to discuss submissions, ultimately submit up to three names with rooms for our board to consider for the naming process. So since that notice that they put out, they've received several written submissions as well as an indication of other submissions that are forthcoming and based on the names that are being submitted of likely cause multiple members of the Public Safety Building Committee to need to recuse themselves, to make the process independent and stand on its own. So with that, Mr. Malinowski has requested that we revisit this item and consider two options. His request is that we reallocate the responsibility for this naming process. One, to appoint a separate group of board to review the applications and make a recommendation. Or two, to appoint a Board of Selectmen member and one town employee to help them vet the initial submissions. And those two individuals, a board member plus one other town employee, would join a subcommittee formed from the Public Safety Building Committee.
Can I offer a third?
And there could very well be a third. There could be a fourth. There could be others.
And this is independent of, of, um, the, the potential for recusals. Um, um, getting this project done has been extraordinary.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, on time, for the most part, under budget. Um, and just, and folks are gonna find out on, on October twenty-sixth just what a terrific facility is. I don't think it's a bad thing to take a step back and just put naming on the back burner for a while. I mean, we've completed the building. I don't think we have to name stuff in the building tomorrow. Um, and let it sit for a while, and then maybe take one of those routes. But I don't think, I don't, I don't feel a rush to name the things. Um, I don't, um, let the building sit. Let people get used to it. Let people visit it, um, before we, we, um, take the steps to name things. And honestly, I, I, my experience with naming things is that, is that, uh, you know, the, the best baseball player in every poll is somebody who's playing now. It's not Babe Ruth. It's because people haven't done historical research, and maybe there are, maybe there are women who were prominent in, um, uh, you know, public safety in Southborough, who nobody knows about and who wouldn't get nominated. So I think taking a step back in the process, in, in some respects, I, I, I welcome this opportunity. And to let things sit for a while and then come, and then revisit the whole issue. That's my view.
And maybe ask the Historical Commission to take a look at, uh, past residents who might've had a, a role in that as well, to broaden the, the pool a little bit.
You know, my approach to this has always been getting it right is more important to the speed at which it's, with which it's done. Uh, I think, you know, this is a facility that is, it's gonna be there for a long time, and it's an important decision to make. Um, so certainly, as Jason put this request together, he wanted to do so to keep, to maintain that, uh, November, whatever it was, November twelfth, meeting date. I don't know that that is as critical to me, so.
So why did we do all this? Why do we have them go through all this? Why do we put the form out? Why did, I mean, no one thought of this? I mean, what, you know, how long do you have to wait? I mean, what other names are gonna come up? We got a great group that's been reviewing this. We've got people who've submitted names. What do you tell them? You know, sorry, we misfired. You know, we wanna wait six months, nine, three years, you know, five years. I mean, well, then it just gets forgotten about too. I mean, there's some momentum, some initiative here. There's clearly people, I think, that, um, all of us could name, you know, who are deserving of, uh, of this kind of recognition. Um, and obviously, there's been a number of people who've already submitted names and nominations and. and, I don't know. If people want to continue to wait, we can continue to wait, and it's not going to hurt anything, I just don't want to lose sight of it. I think the momentum is here, and I think we can do one of those two options. I was thinking of option two, but we, I'm ready to move forward.
I think for me, it was important that the Building Committee was involved in this, based on all they've done to get us to this point, coming in and under budget. At what point do they get disbanded now that monies are going to be turned back, and we may not have the opportunity to have this group have the input that they could have now? I don't know if maybe they would all come back and do it six months from now. That's my only concern. I'm not, I'm not against waiting. I just think it's important that this group is involved in the process, because they got us here, you know? They got that building done, they got it done on time, pretty much, and they came in under budget. So, I think that this is, to me, it's, and it's a diverse group of people as well. So, I think it's a great group to be involved in this process.
Maybe have this group do the first space in the building, and leave one or more other spaces to be determined.
I don't disagree with any of that. I just think that taking a step back would be the, I think we're going to end up with a better process and maybe even better naming if we resist the notion that we have to follow momentum. Take a step back and do some research.
So, do we potentially maybe not disband them? Do we change the charge potential a little bit? I just, I think it's important that they're involved in this. They've taken us down the field, and we're going for the touchdown, and whether we do it now, we do it six months from now. I don't know that there would be any issue with any of them, you know, remaining on the committee to come back and discuss this, if we decide to do it in the future.
You could certainly form an ad hoc committee, appointing them and others to do it.
The Main Street Working Group still exists, and that's in like five years.
I think we're going to be right back where we are today. If we wait six months, whatever that magic six months is going to do for someone, I don't know, but you wait six months, and now you hope that the group will come back together, and if they don't, you're out, find a new, I mean, and if there's research that someone wants to do, you know, Mr. Healy, you or others?
I don't want to do any more research.
I'd say have at it, but, you know, I don't know that.
We love to volunteer.
We're talking about naming, you know, the dispatch room. Okay, naming, and there's probably other rooms, there's lots of rooms at that, at that facility, that could be named for, you know, that missing person that we don't know about, you know, right now, and we want to do at a later date. These are the three initial ones that we decided, you know, let's do.
So, like, based on the correspondence?
It's been a long night, I think we're all just kind of at the wrong.
I mean, it's almost, at least get to midnight, that'll be.
Oh, God.
Well, we missed the debate.
I mean, again, for me, for me, I could vote in waiting as long as I knew that some of these people would still be involved in the process, in the naming. So, I wouldn't be adverse to waiting if I knew, but again, I don't want to wait six months or, you know, too long, because again, we have an election coming up next May as well, and I think, you know, there are two members on this board that may be up for reelection that would, might be like to be involved in this process as well, so. And I'm speaking for me, as one of the two. So, yeah, that being said.
Ms. Cook.
So, obviously, I don't speak, is it on?
It is.
Speak for the committee, but the committee is in no danger of disbanding anytime soon. We think we'll be there through, maybe next June. So, we want to be done by June, but we already think we've got the touchdown, Lisa. We're there. But we're not going away anytime soon, so don't worry about that as far as being a element in your decision here. We'll be there. I understand what's happened, too, so I'm not surprised.
Well, I'll also just state, you know, I think I've done a good amount of work on that. I know you have, you know, if you want to wait till after the next election, and maybe the two of us aren't here, and we can't participate.
All right, all right, that was not, that's not my intent.
I think, I don't know what the benefit of, other than this mystery person who might be out there that someone's not thinking of right now. We've got some pretty smart people who have been around in town a long time, who have dedicated a lot to putting the darn thing together. It's three rooms.
All right. So, let's try and break this down into manageable pieces. Is there any support for a separate group, appointing another group independent of the Public Safety Building Committee, soliciting another group?
Not if, you're going to be.
I'm a no on that.
I'm a no.
No.
All right. So, let's not consider appointing another separate group.
That was easy.
The, I don't think that we, I think it's feasible to, you know, work towards number two, to help, you know, recognizing that they're looking at internal conflicts with the number of people that they have, so they're already, you know, potentially having some members having to recuse themselves from action on that. I think it would be wise to maybe have a board member and consult with Mr. Purple for another town employee, but with that said, I don't know that we have to be married to November 12th either. I think that you can.
I agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
And I, I was going to volunteer to be, if people wanted me, and I wanted to volunteer Ms. Hale as well, or someone else that, you know, Mr. Purple might want to designate, but I, you know, you've been around this town for a long time, and you've, you have a lot of history, and I think a lot of experience in working with groups and subgroups and ad hoc groups, and, you know, anyway, that was a suggestion.
I'm okay with that.
So, are we good with that?
Sure. We're all getting a little punchy, too.
But again, I think, I think Mr. Healy's point is valid, and I think it's most important to get it right.
I agree with that.
And if we could just add that it's completed before April 30th of next year, that would be great.
I agree with that, too.
Yep, fair enough.
Final item, discussion of pilot meetings with private.
The whole meeting just through this part.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it was very, it was very interesting. It weren't a lot of things, but what is the final deadline for, Beth Donbacher, one White Badley Road, what is the final deadline for submitting a name?
So, as it's prepared now, well.
It's November 2nd, I think?
I don't know what the deadline was.
I thought it was November 2nd.
It was the first week of November for their.
Nominations.
Right.
And then we could act on it anytime after that, but that was.
So, it's currently, and we have not taken any action to change a date, but as advertised currently, the deadline is November 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
That is a good point.
We're voting at November 12th.
The meeting is November 12th.
Our means 12th to actually get the nominations to give you.
You want to have that information ahead of time so that you're prepared for the meeting on the 12th.
So, to take a step back, do we want to change?
I think it would be maybe worthwhile to have Mr. Malinowski join us at our next meeting, and we can come up with a revised timeline at that time, rather than try and...
And we meet Mr. Healy's request to move it out a little bit. Excellent.
Perfect.
That's a good idea.
Great.
Can I just address the last item, and we'll be out of here in?
Is that adjournment?
In two minutes. No, it's the discussion of pilot meetings with private schools. Received correspondence from Mr. Purple that indicates that Town Council is looking at the issue of whether the, of what the correct configuration for the Board of Selectmen can be for having discussions with the, with the schools, and he's not completed that. I think he will be by the next meeting. So, I think it's best just to table this matter until our first meeting in November.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, it's right sign of budget season.